Okay, good evening. Welcome to our council meeting tonight. I'm going to call our meeting to order by our city clerk, Marcy Killian.
The record will reflect that all members are present with the exception of Councilmember Franklin.
And Councilmember Franklin is on his way. He says he's coming from the airport, so he'll be here shortly. The Pledge of Allegiance today will be led by Councilmember Amanda Rigby. Invocation will be by Sherri Rowe with Sherri Rowe Ministries. So if you please rise and put your right hand over your heart.
Are you waiting for me? You may be seated. It is such an honor to be here tonight to bring the invocation. Thank you. I have lived in Vista for 21 years, and so I'm especially grateful to you, members of the City Council, for all the accomplishments that you've produced by your diligent, consistent work. You've helped make Vista a wonderful place to live, and I thank each of you for your servant's heart. Tonight, I'm especially delighted to be able to bring the invocation at this meeting because I'm thinking ahead to the National Day of Prayer coming up real soon. I hope many of you have noticed the gatherings in Vista for this event seems to be growing in the past few years, and perhaps that's indicative of a greater awareness for some of us that we need God's help. In 1972, at the National Day of Prayer proclamation given by President Gerald Ford, he quoted Eisenhower's speech from 1955 that said, "Without God, there could be no American form of government, nor an American way of life. Recognition of the Supreme Being is the first, the most basic expression of Americanism. Thus, the founding fathers of America saw it, and with God's help, it will continue." And so it is, after all, an American tradition to seek God's blessing and direction. And as an ordained minister of the Christian faith, it is my privilege to ask for that tonight. I invite you to join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, thank you for our great nation, our beautiful state, our growing, thriving city. Thank you for servants that give of their time and talent to bring about good and lasting change to this city. Tonight, we ask for clear communication and ability to understand petitions, discussions, and recommended actions. We ask for unity and wisdom to permeate this meeting. It is so good to know you always love to answer that request, and so I ask with great confidence based on your word. Father, I thank you for every person in this place within hearing of my voice, and ask you to personally bless each one in a very personal way. For those who bring petitions tonight, please give them a calm and peaceful demeanor as they speak, along with clear articulation. And one last thing I request is that you will bless each member of the City Council for their unselfish desire to serve their neighbors. Bless their homes, families, businesses, and even their physical strength. And Father, in closing, I ask all this in the name of the Prince of Peace in obedience to your word. Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Rowe. In accordance to the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of convening simultaneous meetings, the members of the Buenos Sanitation District will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to the Buenos Sanitation District Ordinance 2006-1. The next thing on our agenda is approval of our agenda by City Manager Patrick Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. I am removing item P1, which is the proclamation declaring May 9 to be Adam Gregory Day. Mr. Gregory could not be with us this evening, so he will have his proclamation given to him at another time. Thank you.
Thank you. And then I'll have our city attorney, Darryl Piper, bring us out of our closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. The council did meet in closed session tonight. On the closed session agenda as published, item CS1 was not considered, only item CS2, conference with legal counsel involving potential litigation cases. Staff was given instructions, no decisions were made, and there is nothing that's required to be reported from that session. Thank you.
Thank you. Next thing on our agenda, we're going to have a presentation by Colleen Clemmison, San Diego Association of Governments, Sandag, Principal Regional Planner, to provide an overview of San Diego Forward, the regional plan. Welcome, Colleen.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mayor Ritter, and members of the City Council. I really appreciate your time this evening to be able to provide you an overview with San Diego Forward, the regional plan. This is a planning effort that the region goes through about every four years, and we really try to focus on how do we improve the region's quality of life as we continue to grow, looking out to the year 2050. What are all the things that we love about this region? And we hear so much from people who love to enjoy the beach in the morning, and then they can be in the mountains in the afternoon for a hike, and those are some of the things that make our region particularly unique. The Sandag Board of Directors, as you know, Mayor Ritter, accepted a vision and three goals for this plan about two and a half years ago, and the vision really is about how do we provide innovative mobility choices and planning for the region's residents to encourage an outstanding quality of life and a vibrant community. And the three goals are really related to that: innovative mobility, creating healthy communities in a healthy environment, and bringing that together to have our economic development really foster within the region. Over the last two and a half years, there have been several community meetings held, workshops throughout the region to seek community input on the goals, on the policy objectives, and ultimately what comes into the transportation network for the regional plan. And when we talk about innovative mobility and the growth in the region, this map that I'm showing you here shows where the people in the region live, the density of people, and where the jobs are. And so if you look at sort of the yellow or gold color, that's the population density, and the brown is the job centers. Right now, we're 3.1 million people, there's about a million and a half jobs in the region, and 1.2 million homes. And looking out to the year 2050, we'll grow by another million people, we'll add another half million jobs, and that will require about 300,000 additional housing units. This map shows where that population is projected to grow. And just sort of going back and forth with these two, you can see that the dots get closer together, and that that population growth is really anticipated to be in the western third of the region, in the most urbanized areas of the San Diego region. And this is largely based on pulling together all of your local general plans. The land use pattern is based on the adopted general plans of the 18 cities and the county of San Diego. So when we look at matching that land use pattern up with the transportation network, I'm going to go through the three major elements of the transportation network. The first is regional transit. This is what our transit plan looks like on the ground today. You're all familiar with the San Diego Trolley, the Sprinter, we have the Coaster, we have a network of bus rapid transit and bus service, that's what's shown on this map. And looking out to the year 2050, we anticipate significant growth in the transit network, including five new trolley lines. That includes the trolley line that will go from downtown San Diego up to UC San Diego. We're also looking at double-tracking a lot of the Sprinter and Coaster to enhance service. I think most of you know that the reason those services tend to be slower is that trains have to wait for one another to pass, and by double-tracking, that would really speed up the service. Also, streetcar lines in some of the business areas in the region, those would be partnerships between the region and business communities who want streetcars within their areas. Managed lanes are a big part, I think, as you all know, of our transit network and in really helping move people around the region. The Interstate 15 managed lanes have really been precedent-setting, I think, in this region and throughout the state as a way of moving not only public transit, but carpools and single-occupant drivers who want to be able to utilize the freer lanes. We anticipate between now and 2050, building a managed lane and high-occupancy vehicle network on all of our major highways, and that's what's shown here on this map. And then regional bikeways are really becoming an emerging area, not only in terms of recreation, but transportation as well. And we, Sandag, have been working closely with all the local jurisdictions on your local bike plans, but also working on a number of regional bikeway projects. Up here in North County, we have the Inland Rail Trail that runs along the Sprinter. We also have the San Diego River Trail through sort of the core of the region, the Bayshore Bikeway, which goes around San Diego Bay, and then the Coastal Rail Trail along the coast. And the green lines shown on this map show where there are existing regional bikeway projects. And by 2050, we'll have a much more extensive and robust bikeway network, as shown on this map. One of the new things in this plan is really trying to look at how we consider the private sector investment in our public investments. So how can Google Car and driverless cars play a role? If driverless cars are able to accommodate more people in freeway lanes, maybe we don't need to add that freeway lane. How do we look at Car2Go and BikeShare and sort of incorporate that into some of our transit stations so people can access those sorts of uses more freely, and just recognizing the fact that we all use, many of us use, cell phones, and how do we have real-time information about the transportation network as we get around the region? This is just an example of what we talk about when we talk about a mobility hub trying to bring all these different transportation options together at our transit stations. Then just to quickly talk about healthy communities and healthy environment, as we continue to grow, it's really important that our communities are still really great places to live. One of the things that we've noticed in pulling all the regional plans together is the amount of open space that is projected to be preserved. Back in 1999, when we pulled all the regional plans together, about a third of the region would have been preserved as open space. And now, looking at the collection of those plans, it's more than half the region that's preserved as open space. That largely has to do with the general plan update from the county of San Diego, where they're focusing a lot more of their growth in node areas rather than continuing to spread out. That's actually shown in these two maps. In 1999, the map on your left shows how growth was projected to occur based on all the general plans that were adopted by the local city councils and the Board of Supervisors for the county general plan. The purple shows projected job growth, and the blue shows the projected housing growth, and the green, obviously, is the open space area. And just 15, 16 years later, as we pull those plans together, the map on the right shows how growth is projected to occur. And so you see how much more open space there is associated with our regional planning. The environmental mitigation program is one of the features of our half-cent sales tax, where we've been able to invest in open space areas to mitigate for our transportation projects and trying to do those in corridors to really add to that open space aspect. And then, in order to help make the communities healthy and happy and providing incentives, the half-cent sales tax also provides grants to our local jurisdictions. This is an example of one of the projects that was funded in the city of Escondido, where they closed off Maple Street and used that as a gathering place for festivals and various community events. And I'm also aware that the city of Vista has applied for a couple of grants in the round that we have going on, and I think you were also successful in funding the specific plan that I think is on your agenda tonight. So those are some of the resources that we try to provide to local communities so that you can do the planning to help make your community a great place as we continue to grow. And this is just a little bit on the Smart Growth Incentive Program. One of the things that the state requires us to do is to look at how, when we pull this plan together, we comply with greenhouse gas emissions reductions. And this, I'm not going to go through this whole pie chart, but the green is the greenhouse gas emissions related to light-duty trucks and passenger vehicles, and it's that green area that we, as a region, and all the regions in the state of California, are supposed to try to work toward reducing those emissions. And there are several different ways that emissions are reduced. The top one is reducing vehicle miles traveled, and that's really about how do we give people travel options so not everybody has to drive alone in a car? You can if you want to, but still to have some options to help reduce the vehicle miles traveled. Low-carbon fuels and clean cars actually make the biggest dent in reducing greenhouse gas emissions, and those are two things that are being undertaken by the state of California, and regions really don't get to take advantage of that in our planning. The Air Resources Board has set targets for the San Diego region that we have to meet, greenhouse gas reduction targets. Those are shown in the blue, and we've actually overachieved those because we're overachievers in this region, and those are shown in green. And then, just to kind of wrap up here with a vibrant economy, it's very clear that an economy thrives when you have a good, strong transportation network to bring suppliers to businesses and jobs and education. And with this plan, we did a lot more work on trying to look at what the economic benefits are, and for every dollar we invest in the transportation network, we're getting close to a $2 return. More than 53 million jobs are anticipated to be generated annually, and that's not only from building the transportation network and operating it, but the ability for businesses to grow as a result of our investments in the transportation network. By 2020, just to kind of wrap up on some of the major points here, we anticipate preserving more than half the region as open space, providing more mobility choices for the people who live and work in this region, to provide 100 new miles of trolley and Sprinter service, and you see some of the highlights here. In North County in particular, some of the things to note, the increased Sprinter service, the I-5 managed lanes, and coaster improvements are expected to also be an important part of the transportation network, getting people around North County, and that jobs within a half-mile of high-frequency transit between Oceanside and Escondido increased from 24% in 2012 to 92% in 2050. So just a few highlights there. In terms of next steps, the Sandag Board of Directors released the draft plan for public review on the 24th of April. It's out for a 55-day public review period. We have several workshops planned that we invite you all to attend, and many of the folks who are here, anyone is more than welcome to come to one of the workshops, provide comments on the draft plan. The environmental impact report will be coming out later in May, and we anticipate bringing the plan forward to the Board of Directors to adopt this fall. So that concludes my presentation. Thank you so much for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Colleen. Do you have any questions? John, do you have one?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Aguilera.
Yeah, it's just really a comment, and I got the chance to hear this on Friday, but my favorite slide is definitely this one here, where we're preserving more land today than we were 15, 20 years ago, and I think that's something that the public needs to be made aware of. 55%, I think, is the number of our lands are now, cannot be developed, because some of the changes in planning that Sandag and our own planning department have implemented. So I just want to make sure that people recognize that. Thank you for doing this.
Yeah, my pleasure. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Anybody else have any? Okay. Thank you. And the only other thing I would say about it is that we have no idea what the future brings as far, electric cars and things, as far as reducing greenhouse gas. The electric cars do more than actually putting everybody on a bus. So if we all went to electric cars, that would solve a lot of our problems. So anyway, the future holds a lot of good things. So thank you for coming up and explaining that all to us.
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Colleen. Okay. The next thing on our agenda is our consent calendar. The recommendations on the consent calendar will be enacted in one motion unless an item is removed from the calendar. Any member of the public can remove an item by submitting a request to speak card to our city clerk, and items removed from the consent calendar will be considered immediately following the adoption of the calendar. So with that, we'll go to our consent calendar, and I would ask if any of you want anything pulled from the consent calendar, and... Oh, that's you? It says my name, and it's you? Okay. Deputy Mayor Aguilera?
I was just going to make a motion.
Okay.
I make a motion that we adopt the consent calendar.
Do I have a second? Second by Councilmember Franklin. Cast your votes, please. That motion passes unanimously. The next thing on our agenda are discussion items. Items scheduled for discussion generally require detailed explanation by the staff and agency member input, and tonight we have two discussion items. And the first one is our downtown specific plan update, and that will be by John Conley, who's our Director of Community Development and Engineering. So he can introduce the item.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we're going to revisit the downtown specific plan. This is an item that we came before you before in March to discuss. This is an ongoing update that we have funded from Sandag through a grant that we received that Colleen just spoke about, the Smart Growth Incentive Grant. The purpose of the update was, excuse me, two, three things. One, to update the plan and bring it into conformance with some of the state standards and some of the plans that the city's had since 2010 when it was originally adopted. Secondly, was to prepare a parking management plan, and third was to prepare a health impact analysis, and those are all part of the plan that we'll bring back and talk about when we bring it forward for approval. However, on March 3, when we came and spoke to you about it the first time, there were some mixed feelings about some of the things that the recommending body had brought forward on the plan, so I'm here tonight to clarify those issues. So my intent tonight is not to go through the entire specific plan and all of the changes that are recommended, since we covered most of those in March. I'm focusing specifically on the few items that we need to have consensus on to move forward with the updates to the plan. Once we receive that, we'll prepare a draft plan, it'll go out for public review, and then we'll go through an approval process with an environmental document, a planning commission hearing, and finally, a city council hearing, so this is not the last time you'll be hearing this item. As part of this update, we also, or this particular meeting, we noticed all of the property owners within the project area, so within the entire 260-acre project area, as well as all the property owners within 500 feet of the project area, based on the council's direction. So there may be some folks here tonight that have some questions or concerns about the plan. The downtown specific plan area covers the map shown on the overhead. It's about 260 acres, will be increased to about 280 acres with the addition of a couple of specific areas that are included as proposed additions. One is the Sycamore Creek Mobile Home Park, which is up at the north finger of the plan. That's adjacent to East Vista Way. It was closed back around 2000, and the city's been working on redevelopment plans for that property, as well as a small piece of land across from the Transit Center on Civic Center Drive, which is about one acre that's directly next to the railroad tracks there. With those two areas, the specific plan boundaries, other than those two areas, do not change, and so there are not any other major additions or removals from the plan. The land use designations within the plan also largely remain the same. There's a mixed-use zoning designation that was approved in 2010, and none of that changes. We're looking at some additions tonight that we'll talk about, but as far as the overall use categories for residential or commercial on those parcels, that stays the same. As far as the process tonight, what I was hoping is to go over each of the items and present them to you, then provide an opportunity for all the public speakers to come, and then after that, go through each individual item, and if necessary, have a vote so that we can have a clear record at the end. So I'm going to separate out one particular area. One planning area is the Civic Center area, and then I'll cover the remainder of the specific plan area all as one group. And that's because the mayor lives near the Civic Center area, so I'm going to...
I have to accuse myself from the Civic Center area.
So we're separating those out just for the purpose of the meeting tonight. So the first thing we're covering is the height limit within the historic downtown district. That's the area that's shown in orange here in the slide. This is the historic, what we call core area, which includes the areas along Broadway and Main Street, our older business district. When the original specific plan was adopted in 2010, it was limited to two stories or 35 feet. That was in an attempt to protect the historic integrity of that area with the bank at the corner of Main Street there being kind of the primary architectural feature in the downtown. The project advisory committee that reviewed the specific plan recommended to increase the height to three stories within this core area, and the reason for that is there was a lot of discussion about the potential for new development to occur down there, and the feeling was that if it remained at two stories, that the property values would not be sufficient to accommodate new development. And so there most likely won't be a lot of change within that area if the height limit remains at two stories. The second is a public arts fee. This was a proposal by the advisory committee to include a fee with new development that would be used for a public art within the specific plan area. It was recommended at 15 cents per square foot of new floor area, so it would only apply to new or expanding floor area, not renovation of existing. It would be used to fund public art within the specific plan or provide for the equivalent value of public art onsite for a new development. We also reviewed some other North County cities to look at what other cities do within the area. And, sorry, I'm pulling out my information here. The city of Solana Beach, San Marcos within their university district, and that's, those are the only two that charge a fee for private development. Escondido also charges a small fee within certain areas. Carlsbad includes 1% of their CIP project budget for public art, but does not charge a fee for private development. The other cities looked at in North County were Delmar, Encinitas, Oceanside, and Poway, and none of those cities charge a public arts fee. Another issue is land use categories. We have, I believe, three of those we're looking at tonight. These are land uses that are not currently allowed within the specific plan or restricted in some form or fashion. One of the items that came up is tattoo establishments. As part of the project advisory committee, there was a request to allow for up to two within the specific plan area with not more than one in any particular planning area, and those are the colored areas shown in the map. There are currently two permitted citywide, and there are two established locations, which were listed in the staff report, so this would add two more for a total of four citywide if the council supports that recommendation. Another land use category is temporary buildings. This is primarily using old cargo containers or other pre-manufactured buildings to modify and allow for commercial uses in the downtown. The advisory committee recommended the allowance of these types of structures with the city's approval on a temporary basis, so the staff's recommending up to two years if we do consider it, so that they would go through an approval process that would be valid for a two-year period and would have to come back for approval if they wanted to stay longer than that. It could also be approved as a permanent use with full site improvements, but for a temporary basis, where there wouldn't be full site improvements, we're recommending up to two years. The final land use category is mobile food carts. This was another recommendation from the advisory committee, which would essentially comprise cart stands or kiosks that are either in a fixed location or along an established route, would be limited to food and drink only. They recommended the allowance of these types of uses within specific areas with a city approval process again. If the council is interested in this, we'll do a lot more research and come back with specific areas that we're recommending. With respect to parking, there was a parking management plan that was included as part of the packet, recommended, essentially evaluated the parking in the downtown area and recommended some strategies for future parking. The staff also included some rates, of which we would recommend for the purpose of residential and commercial development in the future. The rates are included in the staff report for residential. They're consistent with our mixed-use standards based on the number of bedrooms in the development. The commercial weights were recommended at our development code requirements, which are citywide based on the type of use, with an allowance for a reduction based on a count of the project district, the planning district, to determine what occupancy is available. The reductions would only be allowed at the discretion of the planning commissioner of the city council, so it wouldn't be a staff-allowed thing. It would have to come to a decision-making body, and it would require either a parking study or occupancy counts, as I mentioned before. Finally, is a parking in-lu fee. This was a recommendation that was included in the parking management plan to collect fees for a certain number of parking spaces in a project. This could be for guest spaces in a residential project or a small percentage of commercial spaces where allowance for off-site is not possible and onsite is not possible, and so they could pay a fee to the city to accommodate future development. The fee would be based on the cost of constructing a parking space in a structured parking lot, so it would be a fairly significant cost, but nonetheless would provide some options for a developer to pay into, to allow for a small percentage of a break. Again, the staff can bring back a more detailed proposal on that fee if the council's interested. And that completes my initial presentation.
Okay. Would, I think, would, I'd like to take each thing individually and discuss it, but would you rather have speakers? I have general speakers, do you want to take? And then I have some speakers on the specific items. So would you like to take the general speakers at first, and then we can go by each item, and then, yeah? Okay, that's how we'll do it then. We have a plan here. Okay, so first speaker, Brooks Kavanaugh. He'll be followed by Frank Lopez. He'll be followed by Frank Lopez.
Good afternoon, members of the city council, mayor. For the record, Brooks Kavanaugh, land planning consultant in Vista, actually have an office in the specific plan to the west. I'm here specifically to speak on, I call it Sycamore Creek Park, 13 acres of land where former mobile home is located. I realize development must occur, and, you know, I think, hands down, that area will be developed. We will hopefully enjoy and have a detention pond. The trail will extend through it, the trail of which I'm a founder of the Vista Plant, well, actually, the Vista Conservancy, so is David Larkin, who is here tonight, and that's an important feature. But as I read, and if I understand, the amendment that's before you is to allow up to 40 dwelling units per acre. That's intense. To me, that exceeds the need for that area. We have traffic issues. We won't even go there. I mean, I could list right now what I believe to be the negatives that would outweigh the positives for increasing density to that level. I would recommend that you look more at about 25 units per acre maximum. The other thing that, if I understand it correctly, there's a proposed height limit of up to four-story. That, I believe, is excessive. And here's why. Our community started, if you go back and look at the history books, Water in Vista started right in this general area. The formation of the community, the Rancho Buena Vista predated everything. You own the Rancho Buena Vista, and I think there would be a significant impact on its environment, if you will. So for those reasons, please consider a lesser density and a lesser height limit, and you're doing a great job in developing Vista. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Brooks. Here Frank Lopez, followed by David Larkin.
Good evening, council mayor. Before I start, Mr. Franklin, you're still a Rotarian? Are you still a Rotarian?
Uh, not, good standing for-
Well, okay, if you were late, you know, you get fined. So pay rotary next time you go in there, okay? Good evening. You have a couple of pieces of property that are here in our community that Brooks just spoke about. The one on Civic Center, the one that belongs to a gentleman that has a chiropractic business. That particular property, I believe, is right for what you're trying to do here by upgrading the density next to our rail. When I was on the council, one of the big things we did was to concentrate our higher density next to the rails, so that people could jump on that and go wherever they want to go. We also fought very hard to keep our rural atmosphere here in Vista, the city of Vista, and one of the things, and I forget what it's called, Mr. Conley, what was it called when you? There you go. If you, if you look at that, the property on Sycamore Creek falls under that, and you have, you've made promises to the, to the adobe there, where eventually you will put a barn there. They have plans for a barn. Some of that property will be taken out. You also have plans, in order to do any more development down below, is this, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Conley, you also have to have a detention basin, another detention basin, to do any more development downstream, correct, or no?
There is a detention basin that could be built on the site with development of the property. The purpose is to take the downtown area out of the flood zone, so it would benefit the properties within the flood zone, but it's not necessary to accommodate new development down there.
Okay, well, what I'm saying is that I believe that that higher density on that piece of property would be the wrong thing to do. Lower it. Put your thinking caps on and lower that, because I know that you live right above it, Mrs. Ritter, and how would you like to see, four stories? How would you like to see them right at your eye level? That is wrong. Now, not only that, by putting higher density, I know why you put higher density, it's because then you can put certain housing in there, low-income housing. You put too low-income housing in the city of Vista. When I left the council, it was supposed to be medium housing, those two projects. Now they're low-income housing. Are we going to continue to put low-income housing in the city of Vista? Yes, we need to put housing.
I don't think we have anybody that's on board for that yet.
Well, you ha, okay, you, no, but, but when you put high density, that attracts that type of builder and that type of folks who come to this community and build, and, you might not feel it today, but you will, this city will feel it tomorrow, when we have a lot of problems in this community. Thank you very much, and you guys are doing a great job in the community. Thank you. Also, I love what you're doing about slurring the streets, taking care of those streets. Thank you.
Thanks, Frank.
My name is David Larkin. I work here in Vista. I've been in Vista since 1949, departed for my education, but came back. Just as a point of order, were we going to have a presentation, John, on, specifically on Sycamore Creek, the 13 acre, because I didn't hear it?
We covered Sycamore Creek when we had a workshop on March the 3rd. Items that I covered tonight are the issues that I'm asking the council for direction on. The Sycamore Creek property is included in the proposed update that we'll come back to the city council for final approval later this year.
Thank you, I didn't make that, unfortunately. Well, I'm going to be less generous than both Mr. Kavanaugh and, and former councilman, Frank Lopez. This little piece of property, this little sliver of 13 acres, is extremely unique, because it's next to the Rancho Buena Vista. It's downstream from Bringle Terrace, it's upstream from the downtown area, there are pathways all the way through, it is a water course, and you're proposing very dense development. It should be left alone, it should be a park. And I have raised this to a number of city officials, and they tell me, "Well, we can't make a park out of it, because we sold it, or we bought it, and we paid too much money for it, we paid $4 million for it, and, and we can't do that." Well, my answer to that is, you've got a unique piece of property, which, once you destroy it, you can never bring it back. It's like paving Yosemite. You can't bring back what is already naturally there. The Indians were there before the Rancho Buena Vista, we found Matavis. I personally saw them there, and they've been moved into a location along the creek. Don't make this mistake, this, I don't know who's fueling this high density, and I'm going to try to find out, but we've had some very bad mistakes by this city. One was the tearing down of the old recreation hall down in the Corcoran area. That was an adobe, that was a historic spot, but stealthily, it got taken out. The Delpi property, which was vandalized, but still, it could have been restored, it was a beautiful piece of property, and it got burned down, it was a fire exercise. Don't screw this up. Don't put in intense development in the bottom of a creek. First of all, it's going to be very expensive development, because there's going to be water there. You go down, you're going to find groundwater, so that's going to be all sorts of engineering challenges to do it. It's also a flood course, and you can put in a detention basin, but we never know when the big one's coming. Hundred-year frequency can come two years in a, in a row. It's a unique spot, think about it, really, think about it hard, because when it's done, it's gone forever. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Larkin. Stephen Jantsch. He's followed by Cliff Kaiser.
Good evening, mayor. Members of the city council, my name is Steve Jantsch, I live at 325 Beaumont Court, here in beautiful Vista. I want to start out by saying, I started my life here in the city of Vista in 1979, actually at the old city hall, before the old city hall. I started in the development process, and have been doing it for the past 36 years. So, first thing I'd like to tell you is, I'm really excited about how downtown is changing, and through your leadership, we're seeing it change the culture, and actually becoming a vibrant area. So I use that when I looked at the seven proposals that are in your staff report, and I'm in support of all of those, other than number one. I agree that that's a little bit too dense of property, and it's going to bring a lot of traffic, and going to bring a lot of problems, and so there's going to be, the future's going to change of downtown, so I'm in support of all the other ones, except for number one, just want to let you know that. The second thing I want to let you know is that I'm fully in support of item number three, which is the tattoo parlors. We've seen downtown change, we have a lot of the craft beers down there, we're seeing a lot of younger people come down, you're recognizing with some of the proposals here about the food carts, and the temporary building is going to bring a lot of people and make downtown more of a walkable area. I believe that the tattoo parlors will also serve the younger community that's coming out to the city of Vista, and I think it's really important. So I'd like to let you know my support of item number three, and hopefully you would agree, and allow that to move forward, so we can change and bring new businesses to the downtown area. Thank you.
Thank you. Cliff Kaiser.
Good evening, mayor and council. I had the opportunity and the pleasure to be on the advisory committee for this downtown specific plan update, that was very enlightening, but I'd like to share a couple of comments from a personal level about the plan. Number one is, the workshop that was held in March, and many workshops that the city holds, was held in the middle of the workday. Makes it challenging for the community, including people like myself, to come to those events, and this is a significant plan within the city's overall planning, that really needs to reach out to the community and say, "Hey, we want to know what you have to say about this plan." The second part related to that is the notice of the downtown specific plan, as with other notices that the city sends out, goes out to people affected within 500 feet. And in the case of this downtown plan, this is a citywide impact, and even perhaps beyond the city, and somehow, we need to be able to reach out beyond 500 feet of the directly impacted area. A couple of specifics, I like the parking options that are there, but with the residential parking, as with residential parking anywhere, if we don't have court enforcement available to enforce those things, we end up with what we see right now, right on Vista Village, across from downtown Main Street, with three or four cars parked on the front lawn, trash there, and all kinds of other things that distract from the objective of where we're trying to go. Same thing on Melrose, when we took away, or Civic Center, we took away the parking, now more people are parking on their front lawns, and their, in areas that are not their The story, the height limits, I concur with the raising of the height limits, and not that every building down there is going to be up to four stories, but if you've been to some of the communities like Livermore and others, that have height limits, or not height limits, but businesses and buildings that are different heights, two-story, one-story, four-story, it really adds a lot of flavor to that downtown, and I think that Vista can support that. And more specifically, the transit area, the dirt lot that we've been trying, or you've been trying to deal with for a very long time, that area itself, it's not in the plan as recommended, but that area right there should be maybe even five stories. It could be a landmark for everybody driving down 78 saying, "Hey, what's that? Oh, that's Vista, that's downtown Vista, that's the heart of Vista," something architecturally beautiful, and a, something that can get people down here. I agree with the tattoo parlors, to a certain extent. My daughter won't have a tattoo until she's over 18, but I do believe, as Vista tries to progress in the arts community, tattoos have progressed very much in the arts community, and it can be very tastefully done. And lastly, Sycamore Creek, I haven't met Mr. Larkin before, but I agree wholeheartedly with him, that is really a gem in Vista, and if there were a way that we could make that a park, and extend Bringle Terrace through that park into downtown, we would enjoy that, and our descendants would enjoy that forever. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so that's, that's all of our speakers on that, so from, with that, we will move to number one, which is the height limit for the historic downtown, and so, we'll talk, I just have, I just have one on that one. That's, oh, that's number one, too? Okay, I have two speakers for number one, so do you want to hear those two speakers first, and then do it? Okay, so the first speaker will be Jeff Lawyer, and that's followed by Brett Schatzenbach.
Hi, everybody. I live on Ocean View Drive, and after reviewing the plan, going to a three-story, allowing three-story buildings around Park Avenue, just would really impact everybody on Ocean View Drive's view, where, you know, that's a hill, you start building three stories up there, it's, it's going to look strange, you know? Picture New Committee Church surrounded by three-story buildings, it's, you know, two stories is pushing the limit, and I'm just, wanted to bring that to your attention. Look at, you know, give it a visual before we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Brett Schatzenbach.
Good evening, council, madam mayor. My name is Brett Schatzenbach, I'm with CEO of the Vista Chamber of Commerce, and the chamber would like to encourage you to follow staff direction in the historic core area, and increase the height limits from two stories to three. We believe that the opportunity for development will be stunted if we stay at the two-story limit that currently exists there, and as we look down the road, and we've had a lot of interest in developing in Vista, and especially in our downtown area, we think that raising that to three stories would not be, would not create a huge inconsistency with many of the two-story buildings there, and not make it, you know, visually detracting, but would actually create great opportunity for development, so, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so that's our council's turn to talk about that, and I see John Franklin.
I just wanted a question of clarification. The way that you had, in the presentation, said 45 feet or three stories, so is it taller or the shorter of the two?
It's the shorter.
Yeah, okay.
Whichever's less is the way it's clarified.
Okay. That was my question about that.
That was it? Okay. Councilor Campbell.
I just want to say that I concur with our Chamber of Commerce, that we do need to allow for the three-story in the downtown area, because if we're not going to do that, and we're going to keep it the way it is now, at the two-story limit, I feel that it's going to limit opportunity for future development, because of the land values and development, getting that value back out of the property, it's really going to require the, the three stories out of those sites, and, you know, if we look at other communities that have made modifications to their downtown areas, allowing additional height limitations than just the two-story limit, you can really see that they integrate it well in those communities when it's done right, and our planning staff and our planning department under Mr. Conley is very good about making sure that developments fit within the community, so I'm fully confident that if we allowed for three stories in our downtown area, that it would improve not only the economic vitality of downtown, but also allow for that development to move forward in the future.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor Aguilera.
Yeah, I agree as well, but my biggest thing is that I've seen other cities do this, where they actually preserve some of the historic buildings and the architecture of those historic buildings, even though they may have something more modern being built on top, but the old building style is kept, and the, and some of the buildings have been around for longer than I have, I know that. And I think I can support it if we have some requirement where certain buildings are preserved, and their look is preserved, and the new developments are integrated into that. I think that's going to be important to preserving our history here in the city of Vista.
So, are you-
Tough?
So which buildings would you like us to save? No, we have a historic inventory that we did of the downtown Vista specific plan, and I think the majority of those buildings that are in that inventory that are qualified- the majority of those buildings that are in that inventory that are qualified as significant would be the ones that we could look at, and I can bring that back and present it when we come back.
Well, I think it'd be important to look at. I mean, I don't know, I'm looking at the, or thinking of the bank building.
That's obviously one of them, yeah.
Right, so?
There's a handful of them down there. I'll make sure I bring that back and present that as part of the next update.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Rigby?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That was actually part of my question as well, is what control could we maintain over different properties? I'm not a fan of increasing the height density at all. I kind of need to be talked into it here, especially in the historic downtown area. You have Main Street, Michigan, Indiana, going over toward Broadway and Citrus. That area, I really don't want to see turned into a three-story or higher area. The outlying areas of downtown, perhaps going down Santa Fe, might be a different story. Pardon the pun. But, I would like to see what control, if we did agree to allow historic downtown to go up to three stories, what control could we realistically have over particular lots, or properties, or buildings, so that you just don't have, I'm just not envisioning it as lovely as some people are describing it, when you're talking about increasing the height down there.
So, the way that we would control it is through our design guidelines and our development standards. Typically, we have standards for adjacent development, looking at height limits to make sure that there's a step in the development of that adjacent building, if it's a higher story or two stories higher. We stipulate what those distances have to be. We provide setbacks for that in the development standards. There are architectural guidelines, design, you know, guide design of the structure, and what components we look at. The historical integrity of certain properties could be included in that, to say, you know, you have to protect certain buildings. There's a lot of different ways of doing it. It just depends on what your specific emphasis is, or what it is that you want to protect. If it's the two-story height limit, then nothing you can do, and the development standards is going to protect that if you go to three, but you can put in standards that will help it blend in with what's there. I don't think there's any way that you're going to see three-story development throughout that area, just based on the nature of what's there. It's a few limited lots, in my opinion.
Okay, thank you.
And I kind of, I kind of agree with you. I, I just keep looking at the historic buildings, and I wouldn't want to see, like, one in the middle of town decide to put an extra two stories up there, or whatever. It would, that would kind of ruin the look of the whole historic downtown, in my opinion, but I don't have any problem with the dirt lot that's on the corner being three stories. I think that, to me, that would look fine, but I kind of agree. So, I don't know what kind of control we would have to.
So, the dirt lot is in the red here. You can see up at the top, it's actually in an-
What's that little red square?
Adjacent planning district. Because of that particular issue, we wanted to preserve the four-story height limit on that property.
Was it four-story there?
The remainder of the historic core is the orange area, and that's mostly the existing developed lots.
Hmm. Okay. Councilmember Campbell, go ahead.
First, sort of a point of order question. Did we want to do a vote on each one of these items?
Yes.
For clear direction?
Yeah.
Okay. So, to be clear, the area we're talking about, as you can see on the map up here, is the historic downtown area for the height
Correct.
limitation from two to three stories. And, I think, where the, perhaps, the mayor and Councilwoman Rigby could correct me if I'm wrong, their holdup on this may be that they're envisioning these one building going from two stories to three stories next to one-story buildings. And I think what you're saying is that the development guidelines and the development standards would preclude that sharp contrast from the one-story to a three-story building jutting out all on its own. Or, could we require, as a council, a special use permit be required of any three-story building, so that we would have discretionary control of that development in the future?
You could do it through a special use permit process. I don't know that that would be necessary to get where you want to go. I think the development standards in themselves will control that. The way it's set up right now, there's a ten-foot separation, or step, we'll call it, on a building that's adjacent to a lower-story building. So, if we were to implement the guidelines as they're recommended in the current draft plan, you would have a ten, a ten-foot step, and another ten-foot step for each story. You go up above an adjacent building that's at a lower level, to build in patios, or at least just a break in the facade or massing of the building, so that you have a step. On these slim lots in some of the older parts of downtown, you're just not going to be able to develop it under those parameters.
So, you're not going to have the, the sharp contrast happening in those smaller lots? It's going to be a larger segment of, or multiple properties that would be developed under the new guidelines?
Absolutely. The other issue is the city always has design control over the development, so if it, you know, if we build in design guidelines that focus on that particular issue, you have the ability to approve or deny any project that comes forward if you feel that it doesn't meet those guidelines. That's the purpose of the discretionary review in new development. I think it'd be, the way the process is set up right now, it'd be very difficult to get a project like that through the approval process, and, you know, not be in a position where we would have to defend it in court.
And you're going to bring back to us the, what Councilman Aguilera requested to look at, which was what buildings are on the historic list, and?
Absolutely. Yeah, I'll bring back the design guidelines, as well as the historic building list, and present that.
So, that said, I'm very comfortable making the modifications, raising into the three-story height limit. Like I said, I feel that it's going to help encourage additional development downtown, which will help us compete with other cities like San Marcos, and Oceanside, and Carlsbad, that are making dramatic strides in their downtown. So, we want to make sure that we're able to compete with those cities. So, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the staff recommendation for item one.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Aguilera?
I'll second it.
Okay. Councilmember Rigby had something else?
I would have a really hard time voting on this, or voting for this, without actually seeing and discussing the design guidelines. So, I was going to see if we couldn't revisit this particular vote, once the design guidelines had been discussed and presented to us.
We are trying to get direction tonight on a draft plan. So, it would be in the draft plan if you voted for it tonight, and you would still have the option of voting against it if you wanted to at the final approval. If we get a no tonight, it's not in the plan, and we move forward with the draft limit and get it to two stories.
And Mr. Conley, would the design guidelines come back before then with the Planning Commission meeting next week? Is that part of the?
The design guidelines are citywide for that. We would have more specific guidelines for this document that would come out in the draft plan. We could come back and revisit it before we prepare the draft plan, but we're pushing our schedule on the grant. So, if it's possible, we can put it, if it's possible to get direction tonight, so we can put it in the plan, and then we can vet it more at the public hearings as we move forward. That would be my preferred option.
Well, yeah, we have a motion in a second, and I'll be, I'll support the motion, but as long as I know that it's going to come back, and we can take, look at the, at the draft, at the historic buildings, and that
Absolutely.
That makes me have a level of confidence in it. So, so I guess, are you voting on the, are you voting on the voting machine? Okay. Cast your votes, please. That motion passes four to one. Okay, so then the next item that comes up is our, the arts fee. And, John, are you going to go explain all that again, too, or?
So, the arts fee is a recommendation from the advisory group that would be assessed on new development. It would only apply to new square footage within the specific plan area. We recommended a fee of about fifteen cents per square foot. That's less than most of the other cities that we looked at. For comparison purposes, that would equate to about $7,500 for the project that's under construction at the Seo Point, across from the Sonic there. So, it's not a significant fee in terms of the cost of the overall development. The PAC recommended it because they want to promote public art within this area. They feel like it's been a good economic generator, and a good for the business community down there, and they feel like this would provide another funding source to promote public art.
Okay, we have one speaker on that. So, Brett Schatzenbach?
Thank you again, Brett Schatzenbach, with the Vista Chamber of Commerce. And the Chamber would like to encourage you to adopt the staff recommendation on the public art fee for new development. Chamber's very pro-development, as you know. I've come here many times to speak in favor of developments that have come. We do not see this as a significant hindrance to development in any way, but it really goes to the core of our identity as an art community. When you look at the murals, the public art, of course, then the performing art that we have in this community, it is becoming, you know, our calling card, is to identify who we are in Vista. And we really feel like incorporating this into development, it's not onerous, it's a very reasonable fee, and, you know, if a developer wants to come into Vista and build something in this, in this downtown area, we want them to contribute to that identity. We want them to put something on their property that's public art that could be approved by the Art Commission, or contribute financially to future public art. We think it's a great thing for this community, and it will not in any way hinder development. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Campbell?
Question for Mr. Conley. Do you have the numbers on what the other cities charge? And if those square footage charges in those communities, does it apply only to new square footage of development, or does it also apply to major renovations requiring approvals from the city?
I believe all these apply to new development. I'm not certain that any of them apply to renovations. The one in Solana Beach may, but I didn't do a lot of detailed research on it. The three that do charge them that we looked at, we looked at all the North County cities, were Escondido, San Marcos, and Solana Beach. They do them in specific areas. So, for in Escondido, it's in their downtown specific plan. In San Marcos, it's in their university district specific plan, and in Solana Beach, it's a citywide master plan. In Escondido, it's thirty cents per square foot, so it's twice what we're recommending. Fifteen cents over a certain limit. In San Marcos, it's one percent of the construction cost, and there's certain limits to that. And then Solana Beach has a one-half a percent of the building valuation, and that's at a sliding scale as well. So, in the, with respect to the way we reviewed each of these and comparing them to one project, our fee was significantly lower than all of them.
My only concern with having it so low for such a specific, small area downtown is, will we ever really generate money to sustain or create any significant public art projects?
We tried to be cognizant of the development community in terms of what they were comfortable with, and what we felt was a fair assessment. It's public art, so not everybody out there, you know, mandates public art. It will give us some revenue, which we don't have any right now, other than the money that we choose to take out of our general fund, so anything helps. That's, that was, it's a very, the Project Advisory Committee was a very, you know, business supportive group, and I think they were, while they want to promote art in the downtown, they don't want to make it too difficult for investment down there as well, by imposing a significant fee.
I'd, I'd say I'm definitely supportive of implementing the fee in the specific plan for downtown. Like Brett said, I think that we're creating an identity for our downtown, and I think we need to differentiate ourselves from the other downtowns where people are going to eat and shop and spend their money. What I'd like to see is maybe in a couple of years, have it come back to the council at that time, and look at how much money has been put into that fund, and maybe look at reevaluating it at that point. But, I'm definitely supportive of it at this point.
Kind of depends on, on what, what would be built between now and two years, which could be, could be nothing, or it could be?
Maybe four years.
Okay.
Maybe we, we look at how do we encourage development downtown at that point as well.
Okay. Councilmember Rigby?
Thank you. I love our public art in Vista, and it really is a beautiful thread in the fabric that makes up our community. I'm very proud of it, and I know that people come here to see the art and visit the art, and I like that it's making its way throughout the entire city. And I agree that it might not be an onerous cost to doing business, but yet, it's another cost to doing business in Vista, and I'm not in favor of imposing another fee on businesses just to do business in Vista. And I think that we've done a great job with our public art here in Vista, without implementing fees and costs on developers to do business in Vista. And I think we can continue to do a great job without it, so.
Councilmember Franklin?
I agree with what Councilwoman Rigby, the point that she's making. I would second her comments about being highly supportive of the art that we have financed publicly. There's really nice additions to downtown area, and all around the city. My concern is that, first, a modest concern about what Councilmember, Councilmember Campbell said, it's not enough. And we have a, kind of a history of, of, there's too many things, I think, are half-measures, and if you're going to take from people, then produce a product in return for it. I think if we were going to do it, I think it's, it's probably too low. I think the thirty cents makes more sense. But, I believe that we should continue to fund public art out of the general fund, as we have been doing. There are many, many great things which we could do for the people of Vista, if only we just added another tax upon them every time we had a good idea. And my concern is that, you know, we already have a, a street maintenance special district. We charge everybody in Vista special district assessment to light all of our major arterial roadways. We do too many things that are inherent functions of city government. By placing special taxes, we obfuscate the quantity of tax that our citizens are paying. We make it hard to understand how much revenue the city's really collecting. And I think if we think it's a priority, we should live within our means of our, and by the way, any new retail development down there is going to create, if it's retail, it's going to create property, sales tax, and it's going to give us additional revenues to spend on things like public art. So, I think there's kind of already a built-in funding mechanism. So, I agree with Councilwoman Rigby. This is not a debate over whether we should have public art. I think we're all of a like mind, that the public art that we've invested in has really been a benefit to the, to the city, and the people of Vista, and the businesses that are located here. But, I am concerned about the ever-growing creep of additional taxes and additional fees, every time we've got a great idea, and they're all, they're all good and worthy ideas. But, if we constantly approve new taxes and fees, then we're growing the largesse of government. We should fight for our priorities. We should be able to justify to the citizens that it's a worthy general fund expenditure, if it's a worthy expenditure. Those are my comments.
Deputy Mayor Aguilera?
Well, I generally agree with my fellow councilpeople on not wanting to raise taxes or fees for businesses that want to do business in our city. However, as they were explaining things, then I started swaying back again to my original thought, and, and that is that we're taking from the general fund, which means it comes out of parks, comes out of whatever. I mean, just everything, the general fund funds a lot of different things, and so now, we're requiring businesses that aren't in the downtown specific area to fund, and myself, who doesn't have a business in downtown Vista, but I'm a resident, you know, and I totally support the arts, but there's probably people sitting in this crowd out here that don't support the arts, and they probably don't want their money going towards the arts. We are working on a specific plan downtown, so that we can attract businesses, we can attract people that want to live in that area, and they're the ones that are going to probably enjoy and profit from the art that we are placing in our downtown area. And I think these are the people that should have to pay for it. I think this is actually more fair than anything else, because these are the people that are going to actually benefit from it. The people living out on, in North Vista, or Shadow Ridge, or what have you, are going to benefit less from this, and I think that the new businesses, if they want to do business in our downtown, should have to pay for that. And- And I guess that's my feeling on that. Thank you.
Actually, I agree with you, with John. It's on new development, and it's, public art, I don't know, it's inherent for a city to, you know, take that out of our general fund. And the other thing is, like, some of the art that you see downtown right now, you could purchase and, you know, for a price, which if it was $7,500, you could purchase and leave that piece of art there or put it permanently somewhere in the city where now that the art is on loan to us for, what, 18 months or whatever, 12 months? And so, and then it goes away, or somebody from another city could buy it. It's happened, you know, to go to another city before people purchased it. So if we had a little fund, then we could actually, the ones that we really get fond of, and I see a lot of them that I get fond of, a lot of times I don't want to see, you know, gone, then we could actually have, maybe have some money to purchase those. And I don't think it should come out of the general fund. That's taking it from somewhere else that does good things. So this is actually for new development and for somebody that's doing new development. So I would agree with John and Councilmember Campbell. So want me to make the motion? I'll see, I'll see what Councilmember Campbell says, then I'll go for that.
Well, I just had one really brief comment on this, and that I agree with both of you in that the general fund is impacted very heavily. And it's not just a pool of money that's sitting there waiting for fund projects for us to pull money out of. We're not like cities in Orange County that have tens of millions of dollars more in their general fund in their smaller cities, population-wise, than we are. You know, every dollar that we as a city spend for lighting districts, for streets, for parks, we could always use more for essential projects. These aren't projects that are really discretionary in my mind in the city. And if we were to the point of cities like Newport Beach where they're trying to find ways, or even Carlsbad, to spend their money that helps the community, I would see not necessarily needing to add an additional special district fee for something that's really needed in the community. But in our case, we're not flush with cash, and taking any strain that we can off the general fund is very important in my mind going forward in the future. So I don't know if anybody else wanted to make a motion on that, or I'd make a motion that we adopt staff's recommendation on item two.
I'll second it.
Okay. Please cast your votes. Motion passes three to two. Okay, the next thing on our list of things tonight is our tattoo establishment land use category. So, so should I have John, do you want to introduce each thing, or should I?
Sure. As part of the advisory committee group, there was a request to consider tattoo establishments within the downtown specific plan area. In 2009, we established zoning for tattoo establishments that allowed up to two within the city. We have two established ones on Hacienda Drive, one's down on Industrial Court near Sycamore. The allowance of two additional per the PACS recommendation would make it a total of four citywide. The recommendation was not to allow more than one in any of the specific districts shown here so that they wouldn't be, you know, directly next to each other. That's pretty much it.
Okay, and I don't have any speakers on this, so anybody, what is your, what is your pleasure? Councilmember Franklin, sorry, I thought I said your name. Sorry.
No, I was just going to point out that I attended the last Vista Village Business Association meeting. There were about 20 business owners present there from the downtown area, and I asked for a show of hands of who was supportive of the two more tattoo shops. And to my surprise, everyone was, and there was not one business owner that opposed it. Not, I'm not, wouldn't have said I was generally predisposed to have supported the idea, but I, I think that I will vote for it based on the support of the business owners down there. So that's where I'm at. And I just wanted you to know what the BBBA business owners thought about it.
She, we have a speaker, actually, and she has a slideshow that she wants to show if everybody's, is it long?
No.
Okay. Is it?
Yes.
Is this, is it, Hank, hold that up again. I got it. Is it, is it this, your slideshow?
Yeah.
Does he, does he see it? Okay. 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 Okay, does she have to get, do you have to get it ready? Oh, it's, we have it on this, on here, so go ahead and...
Hi, good evening. Thank you. Madam Mayor, councilmembers, thank you. Nice to see you again. So we would like you to consider this special use permit, allowing our business to come to Vista. We've been in Bonzal, so, I'm sorry. I tattoo, I don't do PowerPoint. Okay, so this is us, this is all of us. We all grew up here in Vista, all of us. We're all in our early 30s. We're weird, but we're not, you know, gangsters or criminals. None of us are, so. We've been in Bonzal for 10 years, and we're hoping that you would approve this special use permit so we could come to your downtown area and have our business there. We wanted to let you know that our clients come to us. It's a, we are a fine establishment. It costs $150 an hour to get tattooed. Not interested in people with $5. Will say, "Thank you, have a nice day." Usually our clients, they'll bring a friend or a few friends, and then five minutes into our service, their friends are bored, and they want to get coffee or lunch or catch a movie. And we're in Bonzal, and they do all those things there. So they're patronizing all the businesses around us, and we have three out there. I'm involved in our community here in Vista. I recently became a Public Arts Commissioner. I did a mural in the AVO last September. I help facilitate people, like, there's this guy here, Lev, he was looking for an artist, and I, I mean, that's what I do. I sort of curate things for people. So I found an artist that was exactly his vision, and they're off doing it now, and it's amazing. We participate in the Alley Art Festival last September. We just did the Celebration of the Arts, the library, last weekend. I've done pop-up shows here in the city. Where the Flying Pig is going now, last summer, I did a art event. Probably had like 500 people come to the art event. We had great sales, and everybody liked it. And I'm always telling people to come to public art meetings, but they don't. But I tell them to, so I'm always encouraging it. We have these amazing careers that let us travel the world. We just got back from Tulsa, Oklahoma, yesterday, actually. So this is a good list of all the places that we've visited, and we make friends in these areas, and they come visit us, and they get to check out Vista. They're like, "Wow, Vista's beautiful." I'm like, "I know, I've lived here my whole life, and I don't want to live anywhere else." Okay, I don't know where my slide went. Oh, there we go. So yeah, we are networking, and we talk about Vista everywhere we go. This is a few photographic examples of gallery-style tattoo shop. Our tattoo shop out in Bonzal isn't too different from this. But if we're to move and make this like really permanent home here in Vista, we would really love to transform our space and make it even more special than the space we have And I just wanted to educate you that we are not in the business of talking people into tattoos. If you come in undecided, I'm not going to talk you into something. This is not my business. I do find not doing that. So people need to be completely sure of what they want before we're going to take their And, I mean, tattooing is a creative outlet for people. They have all these ideas, and we help bring them to life. It's kind of an amazing process, and I feel lucky every day that I get to be part of it. And our tattoo clients aren't just, like, maybe a stereotype that people have in their minds anymore. I mean, my godmother is here today, she's a certified nurse midwife. My mom, she's a registered nurse. Tattooed both those ladies, they have best friend tattoos. And I never thought in a million years I would ever tattoo my mom, and that was the weirdest thing ever.
Could I ask you a question?
Yeah.
What procedures do you have in place to check for age for somebody that appears to potentially be a minor?
We always photocopy IDs. It's actually a requirement by the Health Department. We make people sign a release form, and then we, I mean, sometimes when people come in and they look young, I will really scrutinize it, and if it feels iffy, it's not even worth my time. Be like, "Thank you, no thank you." I don't want to deal with, I don't want to tattoo kids, they're annoying, so. And they usually don't have any money. I do find not tattooing them, you know? We tattoo a lot of military out where we're at in Bonzal, just all kinds of people. It's really a fun job. I don't know, professionals, all sorts of people. But I just wanted to thank you, and we really hope that we can move here because it would just be amazing to walk to work and save all that money from gas and then keep traveling the world. So, thank you.
Thank you. I have one other speaker, I have, oh, actually, I have two. I have Frank Lopez, followed by Sam Phillips.
Good evening. In a million years, young lady, I would never have a tattoo on me, nor would my family. But what right do I have to say no to tattoos? I think it's time that Vista opened up their minds a little and allow them, because it's not like there's going to be 100 of them. It's just like we didn't want 99-cent stores, yet we have a bunch of empty buildings. We don't want 99-cent stores, but they are a tax dollar to our community. You don't allow tattoo parlors, but you have how many breweries downtown with young people getting drunk, causing trouble? You don't see tattoo kids getting in, getting in trouble, I mean, not kids, but adults. So give them a break, let them in. Because, I mean, they're not going to put tattoos in every, in every building in downtown, but give them a break. Thank you.
Thank you. Sam Phillips?
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, just wanted to speak in favor of the tattoo parlor. I own American Tattoo where Sarah works, and we would just like the opportunity to move an existing business. We do have retail, we do sell stuff, so it also generates income for the community. We'd like to take over an older building, redo it, make it an art gallery in the front, tattoo in the back, and just try, I own a home, I bought a home over on Citrus, right on the edge of the downtown area. It was on the verge of being, right on the edge of being condemned, and I redid the whole house and brought back all its own charm. And I'd like to do that for part of the city of Vista. I'd like to move a business there that I know will generate income, and that we could take one of these businesses that's maybe not as nice as it could be and redo it and try to make something nice out of it.
Thank you.
And one more quick question for you.
Yes, sir.
What's the law or your policy as relates to tattooing persons you think might be intoxicated?
We do not do that at all. We do not. We're kind of more like a gallery-style tattoo shop. It's not really as much to generate income. Most of us are booked out for months at a time, so people actually have to travel out to us, they have to leave a deposit, do a full consultation, and then they'll come back sometime over the next couple of months and, you know, make an appointment.
Get a lot of drop-in business late night?
We do not, we do not, no. We don't really stay late night. We kind of more do business around 11 to 7, 11 to 8, stuff like that. So it's more daytime. Everyone that works there, families with kids and stuff like that, it's a, it's kind of more of a normal business, I think, than you'd think.
So you would envision closing your business at 8:00 PM?
8:00 PM, yeah. Sometimes we stayed open until 9:00. We used to be on the corner, and we would get late military business sometimes. Military guys come, stuff like that, but we were usually done with business by 8 o'clock seven days a week. And then on Sundays, we closed at 6:00.
Okay. And if, and if it was, like, if you're the downtown area, and, you know, the bars are, the places open, would you stay open because all of the breweries are open and things?
No, but just because it would bring a bad element. We probably will still want to close, work our same hours. If those people would like to come in and maybe book a consultation for later in the week, they could be there by 8 o'clock, and we could schedule something for them later on.
That would be my worry, that they...
So I just want to remind the council that what we're asking is to consider allowing tattoos as a category in the specific plan. Anybody that wanted to open a specific business would have to get a special use permit, which means they'd have to submit an application with all the details, including hours of operation, and we would have regulatory authority over all those business characteristics as part of the use permit.
Oh, okay, thank you. Okay, so...
That's all.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So I have, Councilmember Campbell, are you on there?
Yes.
Okay.
So Mr. Connolly actually just made a statement that I was actually going to mention, that we're not looking at one specific business, we're looking at a category, and that we would have discretionary approval on hours of operation, design, interior, the whole process, when someone made an application, if we moved forward with allowing the tattoo concept in downtown. That said, you know, one of my concerns with it, and I've talked to the city manager about this, is that the type of tattoo shop that we have move in, if we allowed tattoo shops, is important to me. We don't want the type that you see in other cities or downtown San Diego, there's a couple, I think, in downtown Escondido, where it's the, you have 30 bucks, you go in at 9:00 at night, and you pick out of a book and go, "Here's what I want," and they're just providing that service for money. The type that we want to see is that gallery style where people are making appointments a couple of months in advance. It's far more expensive, it's people that are looking at it as a form of expression of art versus somebody who's either underage or intoxicated, doing it on the spur of the moment, and they regret it the next day. So the type of business that I'd want to see is the type that it appears from the two presenters that we had. That's the type, or that's the style, we would want to go in that direction. And I think we could do that with the SGP process and having approvals over the type of business that we have. So I think that our downtown is changing. I think that if you look at other cities, Oceanside and Carlsbad and even San Marcos, they're moving in a more, I wouldn't, I would say more accepting direction in regards to the types of businesses that they're allowing, and it's drawing people in. You look at our downtown, I think it's a ripe opportunity to have a high-end tattoo shop move in that would bring people from out of the area that would spend time in our community. And as I think the first speaker on the matter spoke and said, "They bring other people with them." They're bringing their friends, their family that are waiting on them while they're getting their work done. It may be there, they may be there for a couple of hours. So they're going to go spend money in our downtown. That's important to me, because I'm always looking at ways, how do we bring new people to downtown? The businesses can't survive off of, and thrive off of just Vista residents. We need to bring in people from out of the area. And if a tattoo establishment helps do that, then I'm supportive of it.
Councilmember Franklin.
I'd just like to let staff know that I'd be personally interested in seeing a time limitation when these applications come for our approval. I'd like to see them limited to being open until 8:00 PM in the evening. And with that, I would make a motion that we direct staff to include this item as proposed.
I would second that motion.
Anybody else? See, none that I would ask, well, let me just ask a question first before you vote. So this is just for two more?
This would include the category for a total of two within the downtown specific plan area only.
Okay.
Two more, correct.
Two in the downtown specific area, in the historical downtown?
It would only be limited to that area that's shown in the slide, that's the color photo that's in your staff report.
The orange area?
No, and anywhere in the specific plan, you would, you would allow two total...
The whole map?
Correct. Two total within that whole map, but not more than one in any district, so they couldn't be directly next to each other or within the same district.
Okay, so you could do like one in, but what about the districts that already have one or not in this plan, right?
There's none in the plan right now.
Right, okay. So, okay, so then, oh, Councilmember Aguilera, did you have something?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm just wondering if you might reconsider your motion to consider only one in our downtown specific area? Since this is such a new thing to our downtown area, I think... Since this is such a new thing to our downtown area, I think we could maybe come back at some point and add, but I just, I think it's something we should test out. I think there's a lot of concerns. I, I know I was very supportive, I think, when this came up back in March, you know, as far as being open to new businesses and allowing businesses and not, you know, putting a throttle, you know, throttling down these, you know, I'm very pro-business, so I don't have a problem with allowing businesses of this type in our city. Obviously, we've supported it in the past. But I think it would be prudent for us to consider maybe just one in our downtown area at this time.
If you'll make that substitute motion, I'll second and withdraw mine.
Okay, I'll make that substitute motion.
Could I ask one question on that, Deputy Mayor? My concern would be that we would limit it very narrowly to just one business. Perhaps an alternative to that, or maybe something you can consider is a lot, keeping the two as was recommended by the advisory committee, but not allowing them to be, not only, you couldn't have more than one per district, but not in any adjoining district.
No, I think, you know, what I, I envision is a business like this being closer to our historical downtown, probably, where our arts are at. Some of the areas that we're looking at right now, down by the bicycle shop down there on South Santa Fe, that's the kind of...
But you also have the opportunity to limit it to any particular district or districts if you want to do that, too.
I would limit it to the orange and, well, I'm colorblind, so I can't tell you.
John, do you have more than one proprietor that's approached the city with this request at this time?
Not that, not that I'm aware of.
I would limit it to our historic downtown, the West Gateway. I can't even read this.
It's in your staff report. The, the West Gateway is the brown on the left, the Transit Center is the red...
Transit Center.
Historic District is the orange, the Civic Center is the purple.
That little area right there.
What piece of real estate are you looking at?
Right now, Paseo Santa Fe or Historic Downtown.
I'm good with that.
I would just want to say Paseo Santa Fe, only because we're being sensitive to being further away from a school, and there's also a daycare center down in the historic quarter now. It's like, I'm not trying to appeal to children, like...
I don't want to box them into one location, but, but, but we, we still have to approve it when the SUP comes before us, so we could let them know at that time that we don't like the location. But I, I just wouldn't, I mean, is there a particular, let's approach it through the opposite direction. What zones should we prohibit it within and then allow in all the others?
Well, I would say for sure the South Gateway, probably the Civic Center, the furthest west areas.
West Gateway.
That's all.
Yeah.
Great.
So, then, your motion would be to direct staff to include in the downtown specific plan the addition of an ability to apply for special use permit for up to one tattoo establishment in any of the districts, not to include South Gateway or the Civic Center zone.
And the furthest west?
West Gateway.
West Gateway, yes.
The West Gateway. Then I would second that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, then cast your votes, please. That motion passes unanimously. Okay, so, moving on. Number four is the temporary buildings land use category. This is cargo containers?
Yes. So, this is a proposal to consider temporary buildings on undeveloped lots where not full improvements would be required for a temporary period. The staff's recommendation was up to two years. This was discussed at the advisory committee. The intent would be to activate a site for a short period of time to allow some revenue to be generated on the property with an ultimate plan to develop it. A two-year window would allow that opportunity with the ability to reapply if additional time was requested. And there have been a number of businesses that approached planning in the last year to request consideration of this type of a use.
Okay, we have one speaker, Lev Gershman.
Good evening, council members. Mayor Ritter. Thanks, John. My name is Lev Gershman. I'm managing partner of Tideline Partners. We are in the real estate business, and as Sarah mentioned, we are in the process of putting in mural on one of the buildings in downtown Vista. We have a few of the properties that we're looking at. And I came to, in general, support all of the recommendations for the update made by staff. I'll only speak to this point except one moment of pause. Two wise gentlemen that have since left that made comments about the, the site that housed the mobile parks that has the creek on it. I'm not familiar with the site, but I do value and think it's important to protect natural resources, even though I am in the development business, because those are scares. So, without having much information, I do think it gives reason to pause and really think twice whether a high-density development is the right approach for that site. Now, why am I going to talk to you about temporary buildings or shipping containers? It's the best bang for the buck, and I think it's the most impactful, quickest way to catalyze place and activate dead corners. And at this point, there's still a number of underutilized inactive zones in historic downtown that could benefit from an entrepreneur coming in and activating it with their coffee cart or cold press juicery. There's a misconception about containers being rusty, old and ugly, and John had some good pictures, I think, demonstrated otherwise. Councilmember Franklin and I spoke at the VVBA meeting. I agreed to chair the Economic Restructuring Committee for the VVBA in the process, getting to know the community more and more. And after you and I had that discussion, I decided to do some homework and kind of illustrate the point. For point of reference, why are shipping containers frequently used? It's in part because they are very cheap. Goods get shipped from Asia to the U.S., and often the cost of shipping an empty container back to Asia is more than the value of the container. So, they get stuck here. So, you can acquire these spaces and retrofit them to code and actually create a modular or mobile space. So, some examples, one of the ones that was originally designed with the intent of being temporary was the Box Park in London. It has 40-plus retailers. It was intended to be in use for four to five years. It's coming up on its fifth year, and I think there's a good chance it'll stay. And the reason it was put in place was to activate a dead site. It's since brought in additional development that's catalyzed development and increased property values. Permanent use, Container City in Mexico, as you could tell, you know, there's an aesthetic of component to it, but this is also boutiques, restaurants and public space. It's a large project. This is a Box Park in Dubai, very high-end retailers, 44 stores, world-class retail brands. This is a permanent use, it's a bar in Austin, a really cool bar with a great common area where you can congregate with your friends. And this is really designed for just the cool factor of it. It didn't need to be a container mall, but that's the direction they chose. This is another very cool use. It's a Oaxaca Mexican food restaurant in London, very high-end finishes, significantly more expensive to build as a container than a regular use, but it was done for the cool factor. So, there's two components to it. The most important is the modular component. This is a permanent use, a large mall, 50-plus businesses. It's over 100,000 square feet. It's in New Zealand. It was built after a major earthquake devastated the region. And the reason they went with containers was because they were able to activate and implement very quickly and to re-energize a sense of community. This is right around in our own backyard. This is Carlsbad. Some of you may have seen it. It's a cold press juicery. It's on a corner. It's got a nice park and a dog area. As you could see over in the lower right-hand corner, there's some public restrooms and a little dog bowl on the right. Astro turf, so it's environmentally friendly. They're not wasting water, and it's a great place to congregate and have a smoothie. Now, it's not just about shipping containers. It could just be modular construction. What you're looking at here is a modular unit that a university used to create a temporary cafeteria that could later be relocated to build a new campus building. So, the pros and cons. The cons are is the, there's the aesthetic risk, and I think aesthetic risk, and that's what Councilmember Franklin and I spoke about, and I think that for the benefit of the community should be subject to review process. But just as all things, the review should not be so stringent so to disincentivize private parties from investing in the community because they do have other options like Carlsbad, Escondidos and so forth. There's the execution risk, so you want to make sure you have a good operator doing it. The pros are it's socially responsible, you're using reclaimed materials, it's fabricated off-site, so there's less disruption during the construction process, it's faster delivery, it's essentially on small scale as acupuncture retail to activate corners. There are a number of those in downtown Vista that would benefit from that. Another unique feature of modular construction is that it could be easily removed, so tenants can oftentimes own their unit, which creates an attractive development performer for a developer that potentially is considering developing a site long-term, but the current economics don't support the best and highest use of that site. So, you could do a temporary activation, perhaps as it was referred to, the dirt lot or 100 Main Street, to catalyze that space and draw people in and potentially attract developers and later redevelop it. And it's flexible. Thank you very much.
Okay, do I have a speaker? I don't, I think that's our only speaker, so... Oh, Councilmember Franklin, sorry.
I just wanted to follow up, Lev. Thank you for coming to speak on the issue, and thank you for doing some more research on that. I think the two of us are more of a like mind than I may have communicated the other day. If any of these projects that you photographed or demonstrated here tonight came to Vista, I'd be happy to have them. So, I, you know, the concern is about, again, like I said, something that adds to the community. But if, if we had something like what they have in Carlsbad with the little parkette, if we, if that was the temporary use for that, the lot at, what was it, 100 Vane? Isn't that the address? You know, I would certainly think that would be a positive, and I would be highly supportive of that. And I agree with your point that we don't want to make it overly burdensome. You know, we want to contain risk for, for people that are going to develop. As long, as long as folks don't use the most beat-up container that they could buy, as long as things are in good repair and there's a good standard for aesthetics, if it's one of these high... But what I want to do is I want to set the expectation for somebody bringing that kind of a project to the community, that we're looking for that really, that wow factor of, wow, that's, it, it needs to have the cool factor. It needs to immediately be impressive and shouldn't be the subject of debate by the community, otherwise I would think that we hadn't done our jobs, so...
I actually do have one other speaker, Labrador Enterprises. Do you want to have him come up and do his presentation? Stephen, is it Lawler?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, and city of Vista. I'm Stefan Lawler. I represent Labrador Enterprises. We've, we're a restaurant and entertainment hospitality company that works with festivals, expos, and we doing various projects in the region, particularly at Camp Pendleton, San Community Events Center, and at UC San Diego, where we currently have, have businesses. We work out of, we're a proponent of the container concept. We've, we've actually took the vital steps in, in doing a concept with blueprints and actually researched the container industry and the, the concept of having these containers in, in communities. There's a company out in Lake Elsinore who, who actually helped us with designing and retrofitting these storage containers. So, we, we see that it works. We actually plan to use it in, in the future. We're currently now working with the Vista Arts Foundation on one of the projects here in the future, and we think that city of Vista is, is a very accommodative place for what we do and our business. And it's, it's growing. As a former resident of Vista and probably a future resident of Vista, we, we love it here, and we would like to continue in the growing our, you know, our company. And with the container business, we think we'll be a great fit because of our kind of, you know, artsy, retro-type people. And we're already in touch with the community, you know, with the young crowd and future residents of the community, you know, again, you know, at UCSD and at Camp Pendleton. So, we're equipped and ready to, to do something of this nature. And the gentleman that spoke before us, very awesome, that was an exact duplication, you know, of my presentation, the cons, you know, and the pros of the container business. And being a former Army guy, I have a lot of experience working with those containers, you know, so that's what we pretty much worked out of, you know, and now we, we sit, you know, being, you know, possibly yogurt shops, tea shops, tea bars, coffee bar, you know, even as far as pop-up and small entertainment and a shared space for the community. I think it's a great idea, and I'd hope that the council and the city of Vista supports this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Councilmember Campbell?
So, I'm supportive of the concept with one exception to that, because I've never seen it done right, which is the modular office or portable buildings. Even the, the picture here, the, the last page, that temporary buildings that are often used in the school construction side, they, they always say they're only going to be there for five to 10 years, and they wind up being there for 25 or 30. I don't see that ever working in our downtown area, but I do see the, the other projects that have a certain aesthetic, aesthetic value to them in our downtown, which would make our downtown a little bit more unique. My concern is, and maybe, Mr. Conley, you can answer this, limiting it to a two-year period for some of these type of projects like, that are shown in here, the, the permanent use with the container bar, the, the restaurant, those wouldn't be built for a two-year timeframe. So, maybe we look at allowing for a two-year timeframe some of the temporary uses, like a juice bar. But if somebody came forward and presented a project that's a permanent use, they're going to spend a significant amount of money to actually develop and build a restaurant like we see here, I don't have an issue with that.
So, that brings up an interesting distinction, and that is that you could use one of these as a permanent building if you wanted to. So, the upper left-hand corner, you know, bar concept could put itself on a lot and go through a site development plan and put in street improvements and stormwater improvements and landscaping and parking and meet our code as a permanent structure and get approval. And so, we're not saying that you couldn't do that. What we're saying is you can't go in and drop it on a dirt lot and leave it there, you know, with some tables around it. And so, what we're looking for is in, in between where we could have some discretionary review, allow somebody to come in and put it on the dirt lot for up to a two-year period with some lesser improvements like turf and seating. So, I think you could still see a higher investment in a permanent project than a temporary one, but it's at the council's discretion. If you wanted to consider a longer timeframe, we could certainly do that, and that, that would be the only way to ensure that you're going to get higher investment for a longer period of time.
I would lean towards saying three years, but with the acknowledgement that we still have a discretionary process in that, that they meet certain development guidelines, maybe we could have it set that if they want a one-year period, it's a more minimal improvements required than if they wanted to stay there for a three-year period. And that would be up to staff...
Understood.
...to work with them. That would be my preference.
Deputy Mayor Aguilera?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to get that in. Yeah, those are some of my concerns as well. We, so I guess it would be acceptable to have some sort of a timeframe on some of these projects then, is what you're saying?
The proposal is to include that in the specific plan so that it's automatic, there's no discretion in it. We could do it on a discretionary basis, but then you're going to get into situations where there's equity for one and not for another.
Right.
It's easier to have it just across the board, you know, this is the requirement, and then if you want to come back after that certain period of time and reapply because it's...
Yeah, I think that would be probably the most fair. I think if we allowed two years or even the three years, and then allow these entities to come back to council for reapproval. Because I think it's a lot of work on staff's part, and I don't like the idea of somebody, you know, I'm just going to do it for a year and I'm going to drop something that's not attractive to the city. That's, that's not what I'm looking for. I'm looking for something that's going to add to the city. And I think that some of the projects that we've seen this evening would add and would help, you know, the, the landowners as well. But I think that you could, there's a couple I've, I've seen that aren't that attractive. But I mean, you know, I, I think we need to have full discretion on the, on the projects for sure. But I think if you give them two or three years, someone's going to spend the money. It's going to make sense for them to spend the money to, if they know they've at least got two or three years out of it. Are we looking at limiting where or just an entire specific plan?
Right now, the recommendation is the entire specific plan, but again, we could certainly limit.
What's your feelings on that? I mean, where, where do you think these things would be developed? I know we're talking about 100 Main, huh?
Vacant lots.
Vacant lots?
Up and down Santa Fe, you know, this is, the ideal situation is a lot that's for lease where someone could come in and do it for a period of time before a development plan came forward on the property. If you look throughout the specific plan area, there's dozens of places that could happen.
Right. Mostly like Paseo, Santa Fe, and...
If you were interested in more focused areas, we could come back with some specific recommendations.
Just curious. I, I know we have vacant lots all over, so I would think they'd want to be as close to the downtown as possible. Okay, thank you.
To me, it seems kind of like it locks up, locks up the property more in a, you know, like for three years, so there wouldn't be a permanent structure, you know, nobody would want to build a permanent structure there. And then my other concern was, so what if this wasn't quite, wasn't quite as nice as that, and, and, but they're doing a good business, and then it's going to be hard to have them move off there, you know?
We have to approve them before they come, they build them, right?
They have to go through discretionary approval with us, so we would get to see the design, layout, aesthetics, et cetera, and then the timeframe...
Then after a year, two, couldn't they kind of get run down and...
Sure. I mean, we have maintenance standards that we would be able to hold them to, just like any development. If the paint fades or something falls off, we can tell them they have to meet what was approved and go back and send code enforcement out. That's how we generally deal with it today.
What do they do, what do we do about restrooms?
That would be something we'd have to review as part of the building permit. They still have to provide accommodations for restrooms.
I mean, I wouldn't want to see a Casey sitting next to it.
So those, those are all things we'd have to look at. I mean, it's part of the review process. I think some of these have facilities that they build in, restroom facilities, and some rely on adjacent, you know, properties. There's a lot of ways of doing it. It has to be within a certain distance of the facility, so it doesn't mean you have to provide it on your site. It just depends on the parameters of what's around the area and what you can accommodate on the site.
I mean, some cities have, like, restroom, you know, public restrooms, but we, we don't have in our area, so I, that was just a... It, it goes back to the, when the catering trucks used to pull up and park somewhere and then throw their chairs out and, and then they would, could the bathroom in the bushes, you know, so I just, I don't want to get, I just worry what it's going to do to, if, you know, in our downtown, I, I don't know, I'm, and I don't know how that, the bricks and mortar buildings would feel, you know, the people that have to pay the, to keep up those buildings, how they feel about having something like this come in. I mean, I don't want that to be downtown business and I wouldn't, Vista, and I wouldn't want to see it be on our lot on Main Street, I don't think. I, I mean, that's, that it would take away the parking, and then where are they going to park people for the downtown? So those are just kind of my thoughts. Okay, I see Councilmember Campbell again, and I see Councilmember Rigby.
Just a follow-up on that, and I think this is kind of an important distinction, is that for the temporary use allotment, they wouldn't have to make the improvements for a permanent use.
Correct.
And could you just briefly maybe go over what those permanent use improvements would entail? I'm guessing street improvements potentially?
Street widening, sidewalk, utility undergrounding, landscaping, parking, stormwater.
Right. And so that's what's preventing, I think, a lot of these smaller vacant lots from being developed, is that it's not economically feasible to pay for all of that and to put a business there. So I, I don't have a problem for kind of making a compromise, I guess, in that we get a business that would help draw people to that area, hopefully, if it's a successful business, versus having a vacant lot that's going to sit empty for the foreseeable future because it's not economically viable, because we don't have enough people in our downtown area to support paying for all of those street improvements and necessary improvements to get a permanent use. So what I think it's kind of like, which comes first, the chicken or the egg scenario in that, while I would much rather have a, a permanent building and structure built there that meets all of our design guidelines and, and improvements, we can't have that until we have more people supporting the economic viability of building that business there. So I support the concept, but I'm not going to say I blanket support putting these everywhere, and I think that we would maintain control through our discretionary approval process on each application that comes forward. So I'm very much in favor of getting to that stage and seeing how much interest is actually there. It may be that we get one, it may be that we get 10 applications for this, but we won't know until we put it out there and say we're open for business for these types of uses. So that said, I'd like to move that we adopt staff's recommendation with the caveat that we change it from two to three years.
So you'd require them to be there for three years?
No, that it would be up to three years.
It would be a mandatory review process?
At the three-year mark. Or, or sooner if they had code violations or substantial violations of their approvals that they received.
Councilmember Rigby.
There we go, thank you. I would, I have been looking at these and have visited one in Carlsbad, and I'm not sure that this is the vision and the charm of Vista, but I'm not opposed to giving it a try. Some of the ones, particularly what I'm looking at on my screen right here, I'm, I wouldn't want to see any of those anywhere in Vista. I'll just put that right out there. But some of the other ones were more tastefully done and, and more aesthetically interesting. I would want us to maintain full control over it, and I wouldn't want to go past the two-year mark. I would want to keep it at, at the two-year mark. And as long as we could have full control over the design and the implementation and location, because there are some parts of Vista I wouldn't want to see these at all, no matter their configuration, but I'm not opposed to giving it a try. Maybe it is something that we could get to fit into the, the design and fabric of Vista.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Aguilera.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I am supportive with caution, just because it's something new, and, but I think we, we do need to find something to stimulate our downtown. Since there isn't a second yet, I am going to go ahead and make a motion, if I'm allowed, I think I should be, right? That we just go ahead and support staff's initial recommendation and go with the up to two years.
Okay. Okay. Councilmember Rigby seconded it. Okay, so if I don't, I don't see any more speakers, so... Probably going to be... There, it passes unanimously. Okay, so moving on, we are now at number five, mobile food carts.
Again, this was a recommendation from the advisory committee to allow for mobile food carts. This would be either fixed or mobile facilities for food or drink, could be located within any specific planning area or within specific routes of areas. We haven't gone so far as to define where we might consider allowing these without getting some additional direction from the city council. But again, this was a recommendation from the advisory committee to consider in the downtown.
Okay, Councilmember Campbell.
I oppose mobile food carts in the downtown area, and it, it doesn't fit within our vision for downtown, I don't think. At least it doesn't fit within my vision. The only potential use that I would allow for this would be permanent kiosks, but even that, I'm not really in favor of, so I would say no to item number five.
Deputy Mayor Aguilera.
I oppose these as well. I'd be, I'm going to be voting now. I don't think this is what we want in our city, not at this time.
I'm opposed also, so anybody else want to have anything to say down there? I don't see any more speakers, and I don't have any speakers, so, okay.
I'd make a motion that we decline the option to have mobile food carts or mobile vendors.
I'll second it.
Okay, cast your votes, please.
A yes vote disapproves.
Motion passes unanimously. Okay, moving on to number six, which are the parking regulations. And I do have a speaker for that. It is Steve McLean.
I'll speak very quickly, it's getting late.
You're okay.
Yeah, well, I just, small digression. I love what you people okayed, those two great big buildings so close to all of the transit. It's wonderful what you guys did. You get a lot of static for it. But real quick, I just want to address the art issue, if I may, Mayor.
Please.
Nobody stood up for the fact, I did the Wolf Falls thing, thanks to a lot of your votes over there. It's 200 feet long, but nobody spoke to this issue, and I can't believe it. It's anti-graffiti, just number one, saves more money out of the public coffers than the art that, you know, the 15 cents or whatever it would cost, that's one thing. Property value, my goodness, just in my area over there between Palm and Citrus, everybody loves the art so much. It went from a neighborhood where everybody was looking down afraid to look at each other to an area where everybody's saying hi. Property values go up. Businesses want to move into the area because it looks good and it's clean. Tough fund, and the last point I'll make, and then get to the subject I'm supposed to be on, is that when you have art like that around in the neighborhood and everybody's liking it because it feels more like a community, you, it, what it is, it's a bunch of little individual artists who have given their time to do it. Most people say what I did is, you know, $10,000 worth, but it's all out of my pocket, but I did it because I love Vista and I knew what it, what it would do. But we're individual, unfranchised people, and you're putting us up against corporations like Aztec and Public Works who have total erring with you people and can talk to you every day and say how many jobs they need. We have nothing. We don't even know your meeting unless we happen to go, hey, look. So that's my last point. To the parking issue. Parking destroys neighborhoods. When you've got people parking right in front of your house, fighting for a spot because somebody down the street, it's a natural thing, property values are going up. So people have to come home to live with mom and dad, or people have to put two families in one house. Pretty soon, you've got parking problems all over the place, and if you want to drive property values down and make the neighborhood go down, just invite a bunch of cars to be in your neighborhood. So if you're going to put a stipulation that you can build something and then have less than the standard what is now parking, I suggest you only allow that, don't do that to me, only allow it in situations where you have handicapped or something like that that do not have cars. But I've seen over there on Terrace Drive how they finagled it in. They said, oh, we're going to have an old people, so, so nobody's going to park here. All they did is say, well, we couldn't rent it, and now we're going to rent it out, so now they have parking problems. So it should be written...
I need to wrap up.
Okay. I'll wrap it up. It, it should be a provision written into it, Mayor, that says that if it's ever changed from an allowed lower parking area, it must have the funds deposited to then create the parking, otherwise you can't do it. Thank you for your time, and bless you for what you did with the buildings down there. That was really great.
Thank you, sir. Okay, that is our last speaker, so, do you, does anybody have anything to say about parking? Silence. Are you all getting tired?
I, I guess I'm going to go first on this one again, but I'm, I'm supportive of staff's recommendations on this. This is a lot of work that's gone into this over a substantial amount of time. I think that one of the key comments that's in this is in section 4.2, which says that as indicated in section 2.6, downtown Vista does not have a parking shortage based on the current parking occupancy rates. And that's true, in my opinion, but like this says, there's a perception of a parking shortage that can be partially attributed to the lack of parking information. So I think it's important that we do move forward with parking wayfinding signs. That's very important, because what happens, a lot of times you'll see the same person drive around the same area two or three times, and there's parking 50 feet or 75 feet away, it's just behind another building. So I think it's important that we, we do that. But I am in favor of staff's recommendation on this.
Anybody else?
So I would make a motion that we approve the recommendations.
Deputy Mayor Aguilera.
Yeah, I can second that. I, I agree with the, what do they call it, wayfinding signs? We have a lot of parking downtown, whether people believe it or not. As I drive downtown on the weekends, I mean, there's a lot of people down there, but I see a lot of parking available at the NCTD parking lot. Obviously, our dirt lot is, is partially full, but I think people just need to have direction and where, where they can find parking. So if we can do that, I think that I'm supportive of that.
So we have a lighting project that we're currently working on as a CIP in the downtown to improve lighting and help people find parking. We can certainly include a wayfinding program in that when we come back to the council with it for funding later in the year, if that's the council's desire.
I have a question for you. The NCTD lot, I know, who pays for the lighting there, an NCTD?
Yes.
Yeah. Because it is not well-lit, and I think that's part of the detraction of that parking lot. I know people do park there, but not as much as I would like to see them park there. Is there something we can figure out with NCTD or replacing, help them replace the lights, or, so that they're brighter lights?
We'd certainly like to recommend that NCTD replace the lights and make it brighter. I don't know that we're, I mean, at the council's direction, we could certainly, you know, spend some of our funding on looking at that, but we'd prefer to approach them and try to get them to fix the parking lot. It also doesn't get a lot of usage because of its location across Vista Village from where most people park, but we can certainly approach NCTD and ask them about the lighting. That's not a problem.
That lot is owned solely by NCTD.
Right.
So I recommend that, you know, we can send a letter, we can talk to the executive director, but I wouldn't recommend spending city funds on that lot. I think we have other areas that we'd like to light, especially in our downtown, to use our funds on.
Right. Well, I know a few people on NCTD's board, so I can certainly approach them, but I would just need to have some information on, I think the lights are ancient, right?
We could certainly get some information on...
Look like they're from the 80s or something, so I'm imagining we could upgrade and save them money maybe by changing out to the new lights that we have.
Well, as we're changing out all our lights to LED, we can certainly pass on some tips that we've learned in there, and maybe they can take advantage of that.
Exactly. Thank you.
Maybe our NCTD representative could take care of that. That's John.
I'll see what I can do.
So my, my question on this, oh, I have to say, we're speakers, but I have a question on this, as long, we are making less... this, as long, we aren't making less parking restrictions, are we making less parking restrictions than we have currently on this?
What we're recommending is residential rates that are consistent with our mixed-use zone that we adopted back in 2012, so it's identical to that, based on the number of bedrooms. There are, I don't know, close to 1,000 units that we've approved with those rates that are being built right now, so we're fairly confident that those rates will work.
The ones over in Pomelo, are those, were those rates? The apartments over there?
At Breeze Hill, you're referring to, near the courthouse?
That's not, it's the older unit, I just, I just go, I drive up Pomelo, and they park all over, both sides of the street, all over the place.
Most of the older developments where you're seeing parking problems are a result of two things. Number one, they were parked at lower rates, and number two, they're not being managed effectively, and they're allowing people to use their garages for other things than parking vehicles. Or they're allowing more tenants in their units than they should that have numerous vehicles. That's the common problem.
How will we, how will we, on this, how will we control that?
We-
We can't?
We can't. I mean, we can talk about a mini dorm ordinance or things that some of the other cities have done in an attempt to try to control parking, but this is really focused on parking for new development, not on the problems that exist today. So, we haven't really seen with much of the new development, the desire to have multiple people in one unit, and some of the parking problems that are created elsewhere, because these are high-quality, market-rate, you know, expensive units. So, the developers that are putting them in are confident that the rates that we're recommending in the mixed-use zone work. They're building their projects, nice, high-quality projects, like the one on North Melrose that we toured, at those rates. So, at the staff level, we're confident that that will work in the downtown. The only place we're recommending reductions for is in the commercial area, and that's only if, A, they have a study to support that their particular use doesn't require the kind of parking that our code requires, or, B, it's based on a count of the parking occupancy within that area over a certain period of time to show that there's a lot of available parking.
Okay, okay.
So, that's the only way that they could reduce it. And then those decisions would come before the planning commission or the council on appeal, so that the staff isn't allowing for reduced parking rates. We're following our code. If they wanna ask for a reduced rate, it's supported by evidence, and it's brought before the decision-makers.
Okay.
There is reduced standards for affordable housing projects as well, correct?
There are, however, we're not including those in the specific plan update. Those were included in the parking management plan as a recommendation, but we, our site development plan, our private development approval process allows for parking reductions for each individual use. We feel that if an affordable project comes forward and wants a parking reduction, they can ask for it as part of their project, and we can evaluate it on that specific project. It doesn't have to be a specific plan-wide thing.
Okay, okay, I'm good with that, then. Okay, Councilmember Campbell?
One additional comment, I know that there's already been a motion to second on this, but one comment that I'd like to say that might help with the alleviation of the parking perception is better pedestrian linkage between the West Gateway and the historic core area, and as Councilman Aguilara, or Deputy Mayor Aguilara mentioned, the transit area. If there is a way that we can evaluate when we move forward, the ease of pedestrian access across South Santa Fe to Main Street from the West Gateway, that would alleviate a lot of the on-street parking limitations, in my opinion.
Sure, yeah, the bridge. We did look at that mobility issue as part of the plan, and there's a whole chapter in there on pedestrian improvements that will be part of it.
Okay, Councilwoman Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On 4.3 on the parking committee, we talk about the Parking District Council being a management entity put into place to effectively and comprehensively manage parking. And then it goes on to talk a little bit about what the duties of that committee would be. First of all, who is the committee? How is it going to be made up?
We're not recommending any parking committee at this time.
Oh, so that's-
It's a recommendation that was in the report from the consultant as an option that we could consider, but the staff's not recommending that.
Okay. The other question I had, then, because we had talked about parking fees, and, so, we're not recommending pay to park, you know, like meters and things like that, because we don't wanna go that way.
Again, an option that's in the report as a way to generate revenue and control parking, but not something the staff is recommending at this time.
Thank you.
Okay, I think that I have no more speakers, so, does somebody want to make a motion? Oh, it's already made? Oh, first, and second, oh, okay. That motion passed, or that passes unanimously. Okay, down to number seven, in-lu parking fees.
So, this is a concept to allow for developers to pay a fee if they can't provide all their parking onsite. The fee would go into a fund that would pay for future parking in the downtown area. The fee would be developed, if the council's supportive of this concept, based on the cost of a structured parking space, because the idea is that we would ultimately have to build a structure to accommodate those existing space, or those additional spaces, or use the money to purchase property and provide new surface parking, which it would more than compensate for. The in-lu fee would provide some flexibility on smaller sites like we have in the downtown, where maybe you couldn't provide all the parking onsite, but the staff is recommending, if we do pursue this, to consider only a small percentage, like I provide an example, guest parking only for residential, and a small percentage of commercial, maybe 15 or 20 percent, so that you're still providing ample parking onsite.
I don't have any speakers, and I don't have any council speakers. Councilmember Campbell, lead us off.
I would move that we go with staff's recommendation on this.
I'll second that. Any other speakers, anybody? See no other speakers? Please cast your votes. Okay, that motion passes unanimously. So, now, we have to go back, where are we on this agenda? Yeah, we have to, do we have to burn the whole thing?
So-
Provide a clear, go ahead, Mr. Campbell.
If there, the mayor is going to recuse herself for the Civic Center Drive planning area-
I am.
Or Civic Center planning area, which is in the purple. We should, we need to cover, I guess we don't need to cover everything, but there were some votes on some items that were not unanimous, or were not a majority. That was the arts fee. So, for the Civic Center area, all the other votes, regardless of whether the mayor voted or not, would be the same, so I'm referring to the city attorney to make sure that's okay, we don't have to go back and revisit any of those, okay? So, the arts fee, we would have to decide for the Civic Center area if we would impose the arts fee or not. This would only apply to the area in purple. We've already got direction on the remainder of the specific plan area.
Councilman Campbell?
I'm not sure how this vote will go, but I'll move that we adopt the same measure for the Civic Center zone as for the rest of the specific plan zones.
Okay. Okay. Let's vote. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Passes 3 to 1. Sorry, can someone get the mayor? Do we need to get the mayor?
Will the rest of the council entertain a five-minute break before we begin our public hearing?
Sure.
Before you move, I just wanna let you know that five speakers brought up the Sycamore Creek Mobile Home Park, and as most of you know, but for the audience's edification, the Mobile Home Park, or the former Mobile Home Park, is owned by the Affordable Housing Fund. And for the city to just acquire it, not to develop it, would be in excess of $5 million just to acquire the property, and then, obviously, you'd wanna do development there to build a park or something else. So, just FYI.
Okay. So, do we, are we all done with this, then?
I got direction on everything, thank you very much.
You guys wanna take a break? Sure. Okay, let's make it really five, okay? So, we can go home tonight. I lost my pen. Where's Patrick? Come on, Patrick. Okay, where are we? D2, okay. Okay, I'm gonna call us back to order. Before I do D2, would you guys mind if we take Renee Glotzba, because, so she doesn't have to wait another half hour to be here? Okay, I'm gonna take my public speaker here, Renee Glotzba. You waited long enough.
Mayor, Vitter, and Vista City Council members and staff, and Chamber Congress, as our Vista is moving on, it would be the right thing to do to keep in step with Nick Matioun, Director of Health and Human Services, and continue on with living well and healthy living, and take a giant step forward for a healthy living and stop the unhealthy drug alcohol. As being part of our Vista's Healthy Strawberry Festival, for youths to enjoy with their family and the visitors and the residents, there are many fine places for adults with their adult beverages. So, take that giant step for healthy living and give out a free piece of delicious strawberry cake, or a free box of delicious strawberries as prizes for healthy living after the adults and the children do their finish run. And April 13th to April 28th, 2015, at the 78 Corridor, there were 21 arrests and one painful crash with injuries. And in Vista, March, there were 31 alcohol-arrested DUIs known, and in April, 12 known DUIs arrested. As, let's see. As you know, the tragic story of an ex-cop of six years from Baggersville that got caught up in alcohol and drug addiction and plowed into the gas pumps of a Shell's gas station as the beautiful 20-year-old Leanne Harris was pumping gas, and he was evading the police. His sentence was seven years and four months, this February of 2015, leaving behind his family and dear children without their dead, and young Leanne paralyzed, unable to walk. So, please think hard about your priorities, as some of them can be very tragic. Thank you, God bless America.
Thank you, Ms. Glotzba. The next thing on our agenda will be our Treasurers Cash Report, D2, for the month ending February 28th, 2015. Our Director of Finance, Dale Nielsen, will present this item.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. Before you this evening is the February 28th Treasurers Cash Report. Typically, this item goes to the council as a consent item, but periodically, we put it on as a discussion item, just to talk a little bit about the city's investment portfolio, how it's managed, and what parameters it is managed under. The city's investment portfolio is governed by Government Code 53601 and our own adopted investment policy. The Government Code provides a listing of what we are allowed to invest in, and our own investment policy tailors the Government Code to our own city's individual tolerance for risk within the portfolio. The investment policy is reviewed and amended as needed, sorry, reviewed by designated city staff and an investment advisory committee that meets twice a year. The investment policy is brought back to the council on an annual base, basis, to be- The investment policy is brought back to the council on an annual base basis to be reaffirmed. That is a requirement of the Government Code. The basic tenants of our investment policy revolve around three main elements: safety, liquidity, and yield. You may have heard those terms used before. Safety is based upon the credit worthiness of the investments being purchased. In essence, when you invest your money, you're really loaning it to somebody, or in our case, it's being loaned to somebody. And safety deals with the concept of, are we going to get our money back? Liquidity is based upon having cash available when you need it. If you can't, you can't pay your bills with investments, they either have to be mature or sold and converted to cash. Very safest portfolio, from, you know, safety and credit worthiness-wise, can incur massive losses if the cash flow side of it is not managed properly. You need to have the cash to pay your bills when they're due. If you are forced to sell investments to raise the cash to pay your bills, I can almost guarantee on that day, the market gods will be very angry, and you won't like the results of what happens. Yield is the return of what you get on your investment. After considering safety and liquidity, with all other things being equal, you want to obtain the best yield available. In my personal opinion of those three items, the one we really need to worry most about is liquidity. The safety side of it is if we follow the government, California Government Code, and we follow our own investment policy, we can be pretty assured that the items that we are investing in are creditworthy, and we will indeed get our principal money back. All three of those basic tenants are tied to each other. You can't change either one of them without affecting one or both of the others in some fashion. Every investment has risk involved with it, and risk takes different forms. Yield and risk are directly related to each other. The markets are generally very efficient. As risk on a given investment increases, so does yield. There's generally no exception to that rule, and if you think there is, or if you think you're smarter than the other hundreds of thousands of investors out there, you're eventually gonna get yourself into trouble. Risk is not something to be afraid of, but you must understand it and manage it. There are a number of types of risk that must be considered. First is credit risk. That goes back to the concept of safety. Credit risk is simply, are you gonna get your principal back? When you make an investment, is the entity that you're giving your money to, are they creditworthy? Can they be trusted to return your money to you when they say they will? The next is concentration risk. That's the idea of diversification. You don't want to put all your bags, eggs in one basket. We invest, when you look at our portfolio, primarily in United States federal government agencies. There's also U.S. Treasuries. We do have a fairly high concentration in agencies, but that is pretty much, I won't say it's guaranteed, backed by the full faith and credit of the U.S. government, but as we saw in the recession of the, you know, 2008 through 2010, the federal government did indeed step up and back those federal agencies when some of them had some issues. The next item is interest rate risk or market risk. That's simply when you buy an investment, you are purchasing at it to obtain a particular investment yield. Now, let's say it's 3%. Over time, markets change. Interest rates go up, interest rates go down. As that happens, the value for your investment that you own on any given day is probably either greater or less than what you originally purchased the investment for. Now, if you hold the investment till maturity, you're always gonna get your principal back. Reinvestment risks, that's somewhat tied to market risk, and that is when your investment matures, or if you have a callable investment, which means whoever you purchase your investment from has the right to give you your money back before the maturity date. Generally, that happens because interest rates are, happen to be lower at that timeframe. So if we buy a federal farm credit that's paying 3% and the going rates are down 2%, they'll simply say, here's your money back, because they can go right around again and borrow it at 2% from somebody else. Well, when that happens to you, you just had a 3% item, you get your money back, and you're looking around, and the market's now at 2%. So that's reinvestment risk. And then liquidity risk, which I've talked about before, is that's just simply making sure that you have your cash available when you need it. The city primarily uses a buy-and-hold investment strategy. We do not try to second-guess the market by purchasing and selling investments to try to pay, take advantage of interest rate swings. We are Main Street, not Wall Street. With all this in mind, let's take a look at the city's investment portfolio and what we own at this time. If you turn to page 3 of the investment report, there is a listing of all our investments. We basically have money in LAIF, which is the Local Agency Investment Fund. That's an investment pool that the state of California runs. Those monies are segregated. Courts have ruled over and over, well, maybe not over and over, but it's been ruled that that is money held in trust. The state can't touch it. It's basically a large, almost money market, fund-type investment. We have full access to our funds. If we call up LAIF before 10:00 a.m., we can have our full amount out of there by 2:00 that afternoon. We may basically keep money in there as kind of a buffer for unknown things that may come up. The next items we have are our federal agency issues. We have investments in Federal Farm Credit Bank, Federal Home Loan Bank, Federal Home Loan Mortgage Corporation, and the Federal National Mortgages Association. We also have a few items in negotiable certificates of deposit. Those are kind of just typical certificates of deposit, except that they are traded, much like the local, the local federal agency issues are traded. They're all guaranteed up to $250,000 by the FDIC. That's why you see all our investments there at $245,000. If you have any questions, we can take a quick look at page 3, and, you know, just the items across the top there lists the investment type that's specific. The coupon, that's the interest rate that is on the face of the investment purchase date. That's when we purchased it. The face value, that's the face value of the investment. And then the purchase price, you know, we either purchased it at par, which is 100, we paid a little extra for it because it had a better interest rate associated with it, that's called a premium, or we bought it a little less. So, you know, you can look through the rest of that. I think most of those categories are fairly self-explanatory, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Councilmember Aguilera.
So, Mr. Nielsen, I know this will be one of your, not your last presentation, but...
I have a few more.
You have a couple more, yeah. So, but before you leave us, I would like your opinion on something, and maybe we can't even make a change to it. Where does the, first, where does the five, all our investments are five years or less? Is that a government, state government, state regulation, or is that in our investment policy?
Yeah, well, that's in the California Government Code now, and it's also in our own investment policy. However, the Government Code does allow a city council to give the treasurer approval to purchase items in excess of five years. I would not recommend that, simply because the longer that you have an investment out, five years, 10 years, this column over here that you see unrealized gain or loss, which one, once again, is all on paper, the only time that would actually impact you is if you sold the investment prior to maturity. But those swings of upward and downward of unrealized get, you know, gain and loss, those swings get bigger and bigger the longer...
Like a teeter-totter.
Exactly. The longer the investment is out there...
Further out, you're on the teeter-totter, right.
Yeah.
No, I understand that. My, I guess my concern or thought process on this is, as rates go up at some point in the future, that may give us the opportunity to, some, at some point, lock in on those higher rates. Obviously, we don't want to do it now, or as we anticipate that rates will continue to go up, but once we feel that there may be the opportunity to lock in, in other words, we're closer to the top...
Yeah.
Or the bottom, however you want to look at it, that might give us flexibility of locking in for seven, eight, maybe 10 years, in a rate that, on money that we're not gonna use for a long time.
Yeah, that is a thought. I would remind you, though, to think about this, is can you tell me what that top rate is and when we'll get there? And how do we know we're there?
Can you tell all of us?
Like I told my clients, I wouldn't have to do this for a living if I could do that.
You could predict that, yeah. Just as an anecdotal story, I remember sitting with our previous Director of Finance, with our Deputy Treasurer, looking at federal agencies that were in the five-year range that were paying 4%. And we were, oh, we don't want to lock up our money for five years for only 4%. Well, you know, hindsight is 20/20. We could have looked like heroes for the past five years had we done that. So, I think the best approach that we take is we ladder the portfolio. So we're all the, always trying to invest out there at the longer end, the four- to five-year, and as investments come in and mature, they're reinvested out at the five-year range.
Right.
And so that you've always got this rotation of when something comes due, you're out there, you know, again, getting the best yield at that particular point in time.
Thank you. Do you just need to receive?
This is a receive and file, so we don't have to, any motion.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Anybody else? If not, we can move on to our next, our last item, our public hearing. Our public hearing includes your housing requirements for multifamily residential projects and second units. This is a public hearing to consider proposed amendments to the Development Code related to inclusionary housing requirements for multifamily residential projects and second units, and deleting City Council Policy 300-13 related to inclusionary housing. First, we're gonna hear the staff report, then the public, which I'm sure that's gonna take a long time. The public's gonna have an opportunity to comment. Looking out, I'm just looking at the public out here. Okay. Those wishing to speak should present their speaker slips to the city clerk, and when I call your name, please come over to the podium and speak directly into the microphone for no longer than three minutes. Then it will be time for the city council to discuss the item, and once the public hearing is closed, there's no further opportunity to address the public. So, public hearing is now open, and John Conley is back, and he's going, the Director of Community Development and Engineering, will introduce the item.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a request to review our inclusionary housing requirements that we received from our workshop with the council on February 3rd. The request was specifically to review eliminating our inclusionary housing requirements and eliminating our affordable housing covenants for second units in residential zones. The inclusionary housing program was adopted in 1985 and applies to all of the multifamily residential zones in the city, which is the RM and MU zones. It essentially requires new developments to provide 6% of the units within the project for lower-income households, which is at or below 80% of the county median. This currently only applies to for-sale product, because for-rent product was affected by a court decision back in 2009, so it's been suspended. So in other words, it's only used for condominiums currently. Policy 313, city council policy, is what we use to implement the requirements, and it establishes all the rules and regulations for implementing our inclusionary ordinance. In order to repeal the inclusionary requirements based on the council's prior direction, we would have to amend Chapters 1834 and 1835 of the Development Code that would remove the inclusionary requirements for each of those multifamily zoning designations that I mentioned earlier, as well as repeal City Council Policy 300-13. In order to repeal affordable housing covenants, we would have to amend Chapter 1831, which are our second unit requirements, and that would eliminate the 10-year covenant that's required for second units in residential zones. The staff's reviewed all of those proposed requests. Essentially, the proposal to eliminate inclusionary housing would affect our ability to provide affordable housing by just reducing, you know, the number of affordable housing units that we could require through private development. It would not conflict with federal or state law, because none of those laws require us to provide for inclusionary housing. The state law requires that we provide zoning for affordable housing, and we've done that through our housing element. It also requires us to spend our housing money on affordable housing, which we do have some, and we do intend to spend it on affordable projects, and that's outlined in the staff report. It would not be inconsistent with our current housing element. It would not trigger review by the state of our current housing element, because again, it's not a mandatory requirement. So we'll, if we do remove it, we'll go back to HCD the next time we update our housing element, and still show conformance without that as a tool in the toolbox. And finally, it would reduce our funding for affordable housing in the future, because we would no longer be able to collect in-lube fees, which we currently have as an option for paying a portion of affordable units. The Affordable Housing Program currently has about $6.5 million in current funding. These are all one-time sources that are a result of redevelopment days. We also anticipate a little under $5 million more in future payments from the windown of redevelopment. We intend to use these funds for the development of the Sycamore Creek property, which we're currently working on, as well as a rehabilitation of existing apartment projects, which will be a forthcoming project after we move through the Sycamore Creek property. The Planning Commission reviewed the recommendation of staff on March 17th. They did not recommend in favor of eliminating our inclusionary housing requirements in the multifamily zones, but they did support repealing the affordable covenants for second units. And with that, the staff recommendation is, once all of the public speakers have spoken, is to close the public hearing and amend the appropriate chapters of the Development Code, as well as repeal City Council Policy 313. And that completes my staff presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, John. I'll call our first speaker is Michael McSweeney. Thank you for sticking around.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm Michael McSweeney, Senior Public Policy Advisor for the Building Industry Association of San Diego. While I was here twice in the last two years to talk to you about improving our inclusionary housing program, if you can remember from one of the slides from that presentation, there's a difference between inclusionary housing and affordable housing. Inclusionary housing is mandate that a city puts on a developer. Affordable housing talks about the type of housing. While you eliminate your program tonight, it doesn't completely tie your hands to work with our industry to come up with new and creative ways to continue to build affordable housing. So I'm hoping that any of you, all of you, well, you can't do all of you together, that's a Brown Act violation, but any of you would work with our industry to come up with some creative ways to continue development of affordable housing. I think the benefit to the city is affordable housing developers are incredibly efficient. The tenants that live in those projects, unlike market rate, are there and have to abide by very strict rules. If they don't, they're out, because there's a long waiting list to get in. And the nice thing about it is, they provide you all the compliance data that they give to Mr. Meyer, who files in your file and then sends a copy to HCD. So it's minimal staff report, as opposed to two in this one, four in that one, as you've been doing over the years. So while it would have been nice on a policy front to have had the opportunity to review and improve your program, I'd ask that you continue to work with us to build affordable housing for people in Vista. Thank you.
Thank you. That is all of our speakers, so I would close the public hearing, and anybody? Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would move that we accept staff's recommendation. Do I need to lay them all out?
No.
For repealing the inclusionary housing requirements in Chapter 18.34 and 35, repeal the requirements for affordable housing covenants on the second unit, and repealing City Council Policy 300-13.
I'll second that. I have some other speakers here. Deputy Mayor Aguilera, followed by Councilwoman Campbell.
Yeah, I just have a question. My thing, I guess lately, when it comes to housing, is the affordable housing, you know, working with developers on some of our old units out there that need to be cleaned up, and, you know, I see the affordable housing money to, you know, as an avenue to be able to do that. Would this, I mean, I guess what I'm asking, is this gonna hinder us from being able to do that?
No, like I said, we have about $6 million plus another four to five that we expect in the next few years that we can spend on affordable projects. Like, the primary priority for us at this point is Sycamore Creek, because it's a significant cost to maintain and keep that property. We need to move forward with the development of that property.
We need to move forward with the development of that property. Once that's done, we're looking at investing that money in existing projects. Would this harm that effort? We wouldn't collect in-lube fees that we could put toward that effort, but we didn't really collect much in the way of in-lube fees anyway the policy was set up, so, no, in the staff's opinion, it doesn't really significantly affect our ability to rehab existing units with the affordable money that we have.
Okay. Well, I can definitely support it then. Thank you.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yeah. You know, I just want to go on the record with my opinion on this item, which is, we shouldn't delete something that's not working as well as we'd like. We should try to fix it and make it work more uniformly across the board. You know, the 2009 court ruling that limited our ability to apply inclusionary housing or collect in-lube fees for rental units, we discussed this a couple of years ago. Could be corrected with the development fee attachment to rental units, which would allow us to collect a more substantial revenue stream, which in turn would allow for rehabbing of a lot of those apartment units in town that are not desirable in our community. The monies, correct me if I'm wrong, but the monies that we have in our housing fund now are one-time monies?
Correct.
Primarily. And while we didn't collect a lot of money from our current inclusionary housing policy, I think, long-term, if we looked at correcting the policy and adjusting it to be more in line with other cities, we would see a better result long-term. It's really easy to go, let's delete the program, because some people don't like it, and, you know, it's kind of like going back to the art fee downtown. Ultimately, at the end of the day, we have to have a revenue stream long-term to be able to fix the problems that we have in the community. And once those one-time monies are gone, because of the dissolution of redevelopment, what's the long-term likelihood of getting additional funding sources for affordable housing?
Potential changes in state...
Except for the state to provide for that funding.
And the state, I'm aware that there's a couple of pieces of legislation moving through that would provide funding for affordable housing as a permanent funding stream, but in all likelihood, those are going to be tied to local funds availability, or our ability to access any substantial amount of those funds. So, my concern is that if we eliminate our potential revenue sources and not look at creative ways to generate local revenue, we're going to miss out, long-term, on state monies coming down the line.
Okay. Councilmember Franklin?
How much revenue did we generate in the last year, five years, 10 years?
Not much. I think we have a number since 2008 is like a couple hundred thousand dollars, like $3,000 or $400,000, if I remember correctly.
So, the real effect is probably not...
The reason for that is because we only allow the payment for percentages of a unit. Otherwise, you have to build it on-site.
Right.
So, there's a potential to collect much more if we change the program, but that's not the way the program's currently set up.
Right. My concern, and one of the reasons that I was a proponent of repealing the current policy the city has, is because there are other programs created by the state that exist in state law that offer density bonus to somebody who's willing to include affordable housing set-asides. And I've noticed that most of the projects that have been brought to us so far for multifamily have, the developers have chosen to avail themselves of the density bonus. Not all, but it seems to be a popular thing to do. So, therefore, our inclusionary affordable housing policy was layer number one, and the state at some point, I'm not sure of the timeline on this, the state at some point passed layer number two. We do not have the authority to repeal layer number two, as it is state law. We do have the ability to repeal layer number one. And the way I see it, in terms of making housing affordable in our city and everywhere, I, I'm 1,000% supportive, most of all, of the projects that we have done to rehabilitate dilapidated housing. And I would, any way that I feel that we could see more of that, I'd like to see more of that. However, there is a very, the supply of these units, as a function of the number of people who want them, and probably even, basically, income qualifies for them, there's a very, there's a lack of this, right?
Correct.
It's a very small number of people that win kind of a lottery. And that lottery, that system that we have now places a very real additional cost on developers, and therefore, it increases and has a very real impact on the cost of building new housing in our city. So, for all of the many people who are not fortunate enough to win the lottery of getting one of these units, who are in need of affordable housing, what we have just done is we have increased the cost of all other housing, which is a disadvantage to every other citizen trying to afford housing. And I, you know, I think it's, it's an additional excessive layer of government regulation. It's the city being involved in something, government generally being involved in something that I philosophically do not believe the government belongs involved in. I'm a big believer in the free market. I'm a big believer that the more we do to create and incentivize people to build housing, the cheaper it is, because supply and demand dictates it, the more the supply, the lower the price. So, those are the reasons that I am in favor of repealing the policy, and I think that it's important.
So, I see no more speakers, and we have a motion and a second. We closed the public hearing, didn't we, at the same time? Okay, so I have a motion and a second, so please catch your votes. Motion passes with one abstention, not abstention, one no vote. Okay, so, that brings us to the end of our agenda, and we don't have any more oral communications because they, we did them earlier. So, I just have a couple of comments, and then we'll go through the comments and be done. So, my comments are, this afternoon, members of our city council and I participated in the unveiling of a new sign, the senior center. The sign reflects the center's new name, the Gloria McClellan Adult Activity and Resource Center. While the center's name has been updated, the many programs and services provided for our seniors remain the same. The first Sunday free concert series begins this Sunday, May 3, at the Vista Library at 1:30. Jim Hinton will perform folk music. You can call the library staff at 760-643-5100 for more information. And last announcement is, next Thursday, May 7, the North County Bar Association will host a free legal clinic at the San Diego County Public Law Library located at 325 South Melrose, next to the Vista Court Complex. Attorneys will be available to assist the public in family, civil, and criminal matters, as well as in debt, debt collection, bankruptcy, and immigration. So, register an appointment by contacting 760-758-5833. But drop-ins are also welcome. So, that is the end of my comments, and I will start down with Councilmember Rigby, and see if you have any comments tonight.
Thank you. Yes, I do. First, I wanted to say thank you to the Sheriff's Department for allowing me to do a ride-along with them this weekend. I see the captain back there, and Deputy Storms particularly. She was so gracious to put up with me, and she answered lots of questions, and so it was a very interesting evening. So, I want to say thank you to the Sheriff's Department for the, for the opportunity. We talked about streetlights. Somebody brought up streetlights earlier, and I just wanted to comment that at last week's Sandag Regional Energy Working Group discussion, they were talking about Chula Vista and the city of San Diego are doing a pilot program with different street lighting. And the streetlights now are the LED, which we're all familiar with that technology now, but they have a computerized mechanism in them where you can dim them when you want to, and which areas you want to, and change colors, for whatever reason you might want to do that, and make them flash. So, it was a very interesting discussion, and I look forward to maybe something like that coming around here. I don't, I might go down to Chula Vista and check it out, I don't know. But, anyway, it was an interesting discussion. And I also just wanted to mention that we talked about before, the Ashcan Project downtown. We got the funding for that, and we are ready to do a start date for installation on the streetlights, so that's good news for us.
Okay, Councilmember Franklin? No comments? Councilmember Campbell?
Nothing.
Nothing tonight? Deputy Mayor Aguilera?
I just want to remind everybody, this weekend, the Kiwanis is having the Great Gatsby, is that right?
Oh, yep.
I believe it's Saturday at 5:00 p.m., so get your tickets if you haven't already.
Bless you.
Just a few items there. The Moonlight Summer Season, the single tickets, show tickets are now on sale, so you can visit moonlightstage.com for details. The first meeting on the new skate park project attracted over 90 participants, so we have two more upcoming meetings set for May 26 and June 17. So, you can go to cityofvista.com, and under Construction Projects, you can find out more information or make a comment. And the last item is San Diego County's holding a master plan update community workshop on the McClellan Palomar Airport. And so, that's this Thursday, April 30, at 6:00 p.m., in the city of Carlsbad at their Faraday Center, if you're interested.
Okay. City Attorney?
Nothing to add this evening, Mayor.
Thank you. How about our city clerk? Our assistant city clerk? Is that it? Okay, we're adjourned.
Before you adjourn.
We're not adjourned yet.
Councilwoman Rigby has it.
Councilwoman Rigby, sorry.
Regarding the Ashcan Project, because the street, the ashcans are going to be attached to these streetlights, I guess I'm looking for consensus from council to move ahead with that project?
And this is, Councilwoman is proposing to put up to 20 ashcans throughout the downtown area on streetlight poles.
Right. Going to clean them.
The businesses and the communities taking ownership of them?
They've agreed?
Yes.
If they don't, yeah, if they don't.
Can this be put as a discussion item at the next meeting?
Yeah, maybe. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Okay, so now can I adjourn this? Now we're adjourned. 8:37. Been a long one tonight.